I'd like to welcome everyone to the Fraser City Council regular virtual meeting for Thursday, August 13th at 2020 at 6:05 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Could you do roll call, please?
Sure. Member Brancki?
Present.
Member Blankey?
Present.
Member Carnegie?
Here.
Member Kalka?
Yes, here.
Member Lessig?
Here.
Member Shornak?
Here.
Member Winawicki?
Here.
Great. Approval of the agenda. I do need to add item G based on some calls today, conference calls with the state, an extending the state of emergency through September 10th, 2020. That would be item 8G. I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments and questions? Ms. Dolan, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Member Brancki?
Yes.
Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Kalka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other items, anybody? Councilman Brancki?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question about consent agenda number 7G, the recreation and senior center update. Is that something that should be under the consent agenda? Was that just to receive and file? Was there going to be discussion? Are we just going to adjourn it to next month? I just want to make sure so I understand.
I did ask for someone to be present to give us that update, but there was sent in a package and I didn't know if they could make the meeting or not.
Okay, so I'm fine with leaving it there and we can have a formal update next month.
Right, that sounds good.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Kalka?
Thank you. I just was thinking that it might be better to put items under 11A, B, C, and D under request for council action, only because I'm not really sure. I just feel like this is kind of in the wrong spot.
Second.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, so I feel like the items under 11A, 11A, B, C, and D should really be under eight, starting, I guess, with H, I, J, and K.
On their revised agenda, they're under 10 standing items of unfinished business and projects.
Oh, right. I apologize. You're right. There's a new one. Yeah, so it would be under 10A.
Yes.
And then move those yes under eight would be H through K.
We could do that. I just thought council at the beginning of this year, we talked about utilizing item 10 standing and old business items that we've already talked about. We can do that either way you want.
For me, I just thought it, for purposes of the way in which the meeting was run, you know, in terms of our discussions and the different requests for council action, I just figured since all of these have probably been turned into discussion, for purposes of keeping us going in the same manner of discussing things instead of, you know, 9A kind of takes us away and it comes back. So I'm just trying to think for the flow of the meeting, it might be better to put it under A.
Yeah, we can do that. I don't have a problem with it.
An alternative solution, Mr. Mayor, would be to move 10, switch 10 and 9 so that it still remains old business as we did discuss, but the flow remains the same, inconsistent. Because we don't want to have the report of city administration and then go back to business.
I'm okay with that. That's fine.
I'll move them up to nine.
So then 10 will now be nine. 10A through D will be nine, A through D, and 9A will be 10A. Correct?
Yes.
Assuming it's approved.
Yeah, well, that's okay. Then that'll be my motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change it. All in favor, need a roll call vote.
Okay. Member Brancki?
Yes.
Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Sure.
Member Kalka?
Yes.
Member Lessig? Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I need approval of the agenda as amended.
Move.
A motion by Mayor Proton Winawicki. Second by Ms. Kalka. Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Member Brancki?
Yes.
Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Kalka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session. Section 8C of the Open Means Act for Strategy and Negotiation Sessions connected with the negotiation and collective bargaining agreement with the sergeants.
So moved.
A motion and a second. I need a roll call vote.
Member Brancki?
Yes.
Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Kalka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We'll go into closed session at 6:12 PM. Thank you.
Any action from Council, Councilwoman Baranski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify the pre-ratified collective bargaining successor agreement as presented by the Command Officers Association of Michigan on July 20, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on that motion? Questions? Mr. Ola, could you please do a roll call vote?
Sure. Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Calca?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Terms are close session is over. We'll go back to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Because the public waits, is expecting us to start our meeting at 7:00. Does what?
That's usually what I was told before.
We're ahead of schedule.
But it doesn't even say that on the agenda. But, I mean... Okay.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
It doesn't say that on the agenda. It doesn't say it in anything else. I'm not trying to... If the public is waiting until 7:00, that's totally fine, but I just...
We see a bunch of public on.
Oh, great. And it was advertised as starting at 6:00. It didn't say the regular schedule starting at 7:00.
Right. I agree.
Well, there's some business. We can go on. There's things that we can do. Okay, at this time, I will open it for any citizens that are online to any agenda items only. If you have any comments or questions on any standing agenda items, if you can make yourself known. Do you have anybody, Michelle? I have nobody.
Mike? I'd make a suggestion that possibly after, say, the consent agenda, after 7:00, you might ask that again, even though there's no time, you know, could we move it or no? Just in case.
Yeah, we'll see if there are people come forward.
Okay.
I see none. Okay, I'll close the citizen participation. Item 7, Consent Agenda. Mr. Winawicki?
Mr. Mayor, after approving the revised agenda and having heard no callouts on the consent agenda, I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. My councilman Lessig, any comments and questions? Okay, Ms. Dola, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Calca? Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Am I missing someone?
No. Okay, motion carries. Okay, item 8. Table item, permission to a hire replacement DPW layer position. Amy Sell, LLC and HR Services. I'll have to make a motion to remove from the table.
I make a motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove. Any comments and questions? Ms. Dola, please do a vote.
Member Baranski? Yes. Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Calca?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, item A. Ms. Amy Sell, you have the floor.
Hello. Good to see everyone. I am here to request that we move forward with the DPW hire. I had had a chance to get to know Nick Schaefer and his team and have been very comfortable with proceeding with the hire. We have been recruiting for the position. We've had 39 applicants and we have 10 people that will be taking the civil service exam on Tuesday, the 25th at 6:30. Upon approval from council to move forward with this hire, then Nick and his team would be interviewing with the applicants that pass the civil service exam.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Any comments and questions, council?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Lessig.
Yes, I was wondering why we advertised for this position before we approved moving forward on it. Normally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that we would move forward on a position we had to advertise for a position we had not agreed to fill. So, just wondering how that happened.
I took the initiative of moving forward with putting us in a position to be able to hire and wanted to move forward. And I apologize if that was out of turn.
Well, I just thought that the last meeting was fairly specific that we were to get a report back and then make it, council was going to make a decision on filling the position. I did not understand that we would be advertising it first. So, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
Councilwoman Calca.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the motion that we made last meeting was really to have Amy evaluate the need and find out if, in fact, the need was necessary. And if so, she was to work with Nick. And that is what she's done. So, for me, I think she did exactly what I asked her to do.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Blankey?
Thank you. I would like to know, Amy, is there going to be like, once the civil service test is taken, will there be an interviewing board or who will be involved in that process?
Nick and Jason would be involved with the interviews. And then we will continue to work with Nick on looking at the process. We haven't finalized exactly how the process would work yet. But it would definitely be with the... But it would definitely be with the, the team over there as well.
Okay, well, I appreciate what you did because I don't think you overreached at all. I think that you could see the urgency and where, what Nick was trying to accomplish and to keep everything rolling according to our request. So, I thank you. Thank you.
At this time, Amy, there's nothing really you need from us besides if we, if we approve this hire, we're then out of the process until that person is actually hired by the DPW, correct? Correct. Good. Councilwoman Baranski?
So, just to clarify, the position that we're hiring is a laborer position, correct? And the person that retired was much higher. I forget what the title was, but maybe Nick can help me out for a quick second.
He was an operator.
Operator, okay. So, and, and I just want to reiterate, I didn't even think a vote was necessary because when I seconded it, Councilwoman Calca's motion, I wanted exactly that. Get the HR involved. If there's a need, start the process, do the process. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion, just so that it's crystal clear and appropriate, that the city proceed forward with interviewing and hiring of a laborer position.
Second.
And we do have a motion and a second.
I just, I just have a, I just have a comment. Going back in the, in the minutes, I think, Amy, you followed the, the direction to a T. Reading the minutes right now, that's exactly what we asked you to do. Make the evaluation, determine who's retiring. If he does need to be replaced, and if so, work with interim director Schaefer to work towards an adequate job description. Get it posted and filled as soon as possible with an update at the August 2020 meeting. So, I'm, I'm in support.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any comments and questions? Ms. Dola, could you do a vote, please?
Sure. Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blankie?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Calca?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Absolutely.
Number Shornak?
Yes.
Number Winawiki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Good job, Amy. Just keep us posted on the progress. Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Amy.
Item B, Discussion Update, Interim City Manager Interview with Amy Sell LLC and Mark Thompson. Amy, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I think Mark Thompson is here as well. It was going to be here as I see, I see his box. I don't see his through quite yet, but hopefully he'll, the video will work if he turns that on. So, for the interim city manager position, something else that I was moving forward with, so we did post it. I reached out to all of the applicants that were listed on the Michigan Municipal League Interim City Manager Board. Talked to many of them. I, Don Denault and I conducted three interviews with the top available candidates. I recommended, you know, based on input, I felt that bringing forward Mark Thompson to interview with council would be the best next step. Mark has a distinguished career. I think his approach would be a good fit, and he is interested also in not pursuing a full-time role, which I think can provide a benefit and a smooth transition when we do go into the full-time search. So, Mark, I see you, I think I see you there, but I would like to introduce you to the council. I would like you to provide a brief introduction about yourself and talk about what your view would be for this role.
Thank you, Amy, and, and I am honored to have the opportunity to talk about the position. And I have to be honest with you, despite Amy's glowing comments, Zoom meetings not my strong suit, and so I'm not sure whether I'm doing this properly or not, but I presume you can hear me. Is that correct?
Yes, we can hear you. Can't see you, but we can hear you.
I don't know why that is, and I apologize for that.
Click on your name, you'll see video, possibly.
Very bottom. Honestly, that's okay. You can just come here with us.
Yeah. Is your camera hidden? Is your, was there like a, anything on your camera? I've done this before.
Well, anyway, as I said, thank you for the opportunity. My, my wife is helping try to fix and compensate for my technical deficiencies. Nevertheless, I am, as I said, honored to participate in the discussion. Been doing municipal work for about 41 years and retired from my most recent job at the end of, at the end of December, and quite frankly, this kind of work is in my blood, so I'm interested in continuing to do it, and this opportunity seemed like it was ideal, I thought, for me. On a, on kind of a personal note, my wife and I have been married for 37 years, which is a testament to her grace and patience. We are empty nesters, have two children. I live in, in the Toledo area, suburb of Toledo. So, it would be a bit of a drive, but nevertheless, we've been up to visit. I've watched three of your council meetings, spoke with Mr. Denault and several times with Amy about the position and what I might bring to it and continue to be very interested. I guess I would, would like the council to know that while I'm not interested in the position on a long-term basis, I wouldn't see the interim position as one which would be sort of keeping the seat warm for the next person. It seems like there's a lot of opportunities, lots of things to accomplish in your community. It appears to me that in addition to routine, the normal day-to-day city manager kind of work, things like making sure that capital projects are moving forward and that those projects that are in process continue to move forward. Obviously, finances are a critical issue in any community, particularly in yours. I would look forward to the opportunity to meet with the various staff members and set some short-term goals. Would make sense to set a lot of long-term goals from an interim position. We would, we would certainly look at the, I understand there's an issue with the population, 15,000 or, or not. So, that would be critical, getting a plan, I guess, to deal with that issue, and I, as I understand it, there has already been some planning to do that. But in addition to those routine, routine sort of day-to-day activities, it seems to me that one area where we would focus would be communication between the staff and the council. Having watched some of the previous meetings, it seems that that's an area where some improvement might be possible. We would certainly also try to improve relationship between the staff and the council. That's critical, particularly as Frazier and other communities face challenges, particularly financial challenges. Everybody's got to be working together. It is, it is complex work under the best of circumstances. In the final sort of area of concentration in my mind is trying to create a situation where there's a smooth transition for the person who is there on a permanent basis, and that would be a little ways down the road, but it seems that there are some things that could be done to help smooth that transition, to help ensure the success of whoever gets selected on a, on a permanent basis. It seems that there are some, it sounds as if one of them was resolved today, the labor, labor contract, but other things as well that, that need to be, perhaps many of them can be resolved. Maybe some positions can be resolved in terms of whether they are interim or not. Some of the kinds of things that frankly would help make the, the transition smooth and frankly make the, make the position attractive to top-notch candidates on a permanent basis. And hopefully, there's some IT help so I can figure out how to do Zoom meetings better than, than I am today. That's just my own, that would be my personal, personal goal for me, I guess.
Well, thank you, Mark. Just, I'm sure all the council people have questions. But one of mine is, when you mentioned you are retired, are you retiring this year?
No, I retired at the end of 2019.
19, okay.
Yeah, so I have been, in fact, today is, I think, the first time I had a necktie on, and you can't see it since December 31st, to be honest with you. So, so, yeah, I've been retired. I worked 41 years in five different communities, all of them in Ohio, so I don't want to mislead you, and certainly, there's a lot of commonality about municipal government, but there are some differences between Ohio and Michigan as well.
What were the populations of some of those communities?
Ranged from 56,000 down to 4,500.
And was it farming, industrial? What was the main basis for your taxable sources down?
In Ohio, the, the, the primary source of income for municipalities in Ohio is a municipal income tax generally, as opposed to Michigan where it is primarily property tax, as I understand it, and then a substantial amount of funding comes from the state. In Ohio, the state doesn't provide a lot of funding for municipal governments. Income tax is the primary focus.
Okay. And after talking with the people here, Don and Amy, and how long do you think, how much time do you look as an interim position could be for you?
Well, that, that is a question that we spoke about, and if, if your community is looking at resolving this and having a permanent person in there in a month, then candidly, I'm not interested because I've got some other things going on that I'm going to stop here. So, I'd be looking, you know, in the four to six-month range, something along those lines.
Yes, being realistic. That's, that's my thoughts to it. To do it right and get exactly what we're looking for, I think that's going to be a minimum amount of time to, to do what we have to do. Okay, I'll leave it open for any other council people. Ms. Councilwoman Blankie?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Mark. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to tell you the biggest difference between Michigan and Ohio, of course, are the football teams, but you already know that. Secondly, you, you did hit the nail on the head relative to the fact of a communication gap between the employees and, and those of us on council, and having been an employee here, I find it upsetting. I'm glad that you noted that. What would be one or two ways you would find to resolve their problem within your capacity as city manager?
Well, first of all, I don't, I don't know all of the history, and I don't want to speak ill of anybody, so let me
Right.
my comments with that.
Right.
One of the things that I would try to accomplish, won't make any guarantees, but think we can do this, is there would not be, there wouldn't be surprises on a council agenda. In, in a couple of the meetings that I, I looked at, it appeared to me that there were things sort of got there and the council wasn't ready for them or didn't expect them. And I understand how difficult that can be, and in 40 years, I've learned a few things, some of them the hard way, quite frankly, and that's one of them. So, unless there was a real, real crisis, the council wouldn't be getting surprised by anything. The second thing that comes to mind is that what I would envision is setting down with each council member individually, and then maybe as a group to try to identify not only problems, but some goals, some short-term goals, what do we want to accomplish in the next six months and that sort of thing, and do the same thing with the staff. See, see where there's common, you know, common areas of interest and concern, and conceivably get the council and the senior staff together to kind of work through some of those issues and try to identify areas of common interest.
I, I, okay, I'm sorry. Are you, I didn't mean to interrupt. Thank you. I think that's very important, and I think those are three good ideas to begin with. Thank you, Mark.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Baranski?
Yeah, I was intrigued, Mark, by your statement that you were contemplating, and I appreciate this, that you weren't just going to babysit and keep the seat warm. Did you have, after looking at, and I know you haven't spent a long time investigating Frazier, but did you have any short-term goals that come to mind immediately that you'd like to implement if you were given the interim director position? Beyond communication, obviously.
Sure, that's one. A couple of these are sort of subjective. One of them would be to make sure that the, the staff people felt like they could count on the city manager, and again, I'm not suggesting that hasn't been the case. Count on the manager in a couple of ways. Number one, to support them when support is appropriate. Number two, to create a high level of expectation in terms of professionalism, whether that's with council or dealing with citizens or dealing with all of the police. We would also, I would also look at those, those things that are sort of in process, any, throughout the year at any municipality, there, there are all kinds of things that are due on certain dates and need to be done and need to be completed. So, we would step back and do some of that kind of work immediately. Not very fun stuff. It's really administration, but it's, it's, it's key to keeping the processes moving forward. The other thing we would do, and again, this is, this is a little bit different because of the short-term nature, is sit down with each department, set a couple of short-term goals, allow the department to establish a couple of goals. I would add, typically would add one in there as well, and make sure that those goals are attached to a timeframe that can get done in, you know, in, in six months. So, and I don't know exactly what those would be. I'd have to kind of evaluate the departments and, and work with the department heads in that regard. So, I guess, overall, sort of, make sure that the departments knew that there was someone that they could count on, make sure that they understood there were high expectations, have them identify some goals. We'd monitor that as well, obviously, during the period of time, and try to get those goals to match up with some of the things we were learning from the council as well, as I indicated before. We try to meet individually council members. I would try to get a feel for areas that were important for the council members, see if there weren't some common, common goals for, for the council that we could then sort of transfer and have staff goals match up with us.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Calca?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for coming or for being available today. I truly, truly appreciate it. I've had an opportunity to take a look at your resume. I've looked at it very thoroughly. I have talked to Amy via email about what my needs are, what our needs are, what my vision is for our city. I do feel that you need, need that we need right now. I love the fact that you're not looking for something long-term, not to say that you're not qualified. Just in these answers, you've hit it out of the park, closing your way, you've watched three meetings, and you have hit it on the nail, the nail on the head. You, you've just, I've really, I've been impressed, incredibly impressed. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Mr. Mark Thompson as the interim city manager and to authorize the mayor to execute the resolution on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Lessig?
Yes, I had some questions. Mr. Thompson, this is Michael Lessig, one of the council members. An interim position is four to six months, and Our interim position is four to six months, and we have two things that are critical in the next six months. One is the audit. And we don't have a permanent finance director at the moment. Would you be capable of working with our interim finance director contracted finance person to work with them on any audit related issues and manage that? That's the first question.
Well, I I wouldn't say, I certainly don't have a CPA background or those or anything like that from a technical standpoint. I will say, though, that if you were to ask me to identify my strengths, finance related items would be at the top of the list. Very proud of the things that we have been able to do as it relates to finance, so I'm kind of a numbers nerd, I suppose. But I overstate my my ability in terms of dealing with, you know, journal entries and that sort of thing.
No, I'm not. I'm not asking that. What I'm more concerned
Let me touch the checkbook, as a matter of fact, so.
Well, my main concern is that since we don't have a permanent full time finance director, and we will be having an audit, you would be able to coordinate between the auditors, the finance director, you could be an interface between those two and make this process smooth, I I would hope. I assume it's going to be smooth. But you would be able to, you would be able to fit into a role in there and help make that happen.
Well, obviously, that would be a very high priority, and and we would focus on that from the very beginning. And and the answer to your question is yes, I would welcome that opportunity, and and we'll put it at the top of the list.
Okay, second question is, if it is a four month position, we're into December, if we're in, if it's six months, we're into February. And February is when we are getting very involved in the next year's budget. You are not, you're from Ohio, and I won't hold that against you. I know good people in Ohio. But the the question is, would you be able to, again, work with our finance, whoever that finance person is, to help prepare and our our staff and department heads to at least prepare a interim, a beginning Okay, somebody's talking, but I would like to know that can we still assume that we would be on track for our budget to be ready and for you to hand it off? Let's say it's six months. And we're in February, you would feel you could be in a position to have that budget in a here you go, hand it off, a position to the new city manager and bring them up to speed on what you've been working on. So you said you're a numbers nerd. I just want to confirm that that would be something you would be comfortable doing, even though it's Michigan Finance versus Ohio.
Yes, sir. I I have no doubt about my abilities in in that regard, that as as I indicated before, I think is a strength. And I think it demonstrated strength, so that is not you may rest assured that that will be done properly and done well and and done on time.
Okay, and I guess the, I guess the last question would be in terms of information that you would share with the council, if the council asked for financial reports, et cetera, you would, would you have any problem with sharing those if they weren't otherwise proprietary or incomplete? So let's say that we had, I, let's say I asked for the budget for the DPW, you you would provide that information without any roadblocks or any kind of you would be open to doing that in a transparent manner, I guess that's the term.
I can't imagine a circumstance where any city manager wouldn't give budget information to a member of the council.
Okay, thank you.
I've just one other follow up question, Mark. Is if this positions is is offered to you, what do you see your first two to three weeks? Is part of what you were doing?
Well, obviously, the beginning to get a handle on the financial situation would be critical. That's, I would envision that being a sort of a lot of study and then questions to the appropriate folks on the staff. I would also envision, as as I hinted at before, meeting with each council member, rather, each staff member, beginning to set some goals, try to understand what the issues are that they have, and during that same period of time, hopefully, meet with council members individually and and have some of the same discussions, you know, what are the issues, what are the priorities? And and after a couple of weeks, begin to put some of those pieces together and and see whether are common, where there's sort of common areas so that we can start moving in in those directions. Obviously, council sets policy and and makes, it's got a longer term view, and certainly, in a short period of time, we try to get the staff moving in that same direction. So the first couple of weeks, I think, are gonna be a lots of meetings, and I don't, I don't like staff meetings and that sort of thing. I don't care for those. I envision maybe one of those, and then some one on one meetings with the members of the council and the staff.
And as your plans at this point?
Too, it's gonna be important, because there's gotta be a way to get my this computer to work.
Yes. Is your plans at this point to travel to and fro daily, or how are you gonna do that?
That is my plan. And it's about a seventy minute drive. My wife and I came up to look around a couple of weeks ago. And it was seventy minutes on the way back. It was about an hour and a half on the way up, because we missed the detour. So it took us a while to get there, but we we made it straight back. So, yeah, I'm not thrilled about that, but that's, that would be my plan, is drive up and back.
Well, it is orange barrel season in Michigan, so sorry.
Okay, I believe that's the questions I have. Follow up, we do have a motion on the floor. Ms. Colka, would you like to repeat that motion?
Sure. The only thing I would I'm getting a lot is that I would have no problem with Thompson working from home a couple of days a week, maybe just like two. If, in fact, my motion passes, maybe we can talk about that next, so that it would break up the monotony of having to drive back and forth seventy minutes, you know, in one direction, given the task that he's taking on. But given that, my motion is that I would make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Mr. Mark Thompson as interim city manager and to authorize the mayor to execute the on behalf of the city.
I do have a question. Normally, we would direct the attorney to enter into I'm sorry, Don, you're reverberating, but that was how we did it before, both times we hired city manager. Because while we may appoint him, but the financial details and other details may not be to his satisfaction. So normally, we did that through the city manager, through Mr. Denault or his predecessor, so that we came back and approved a contract for that. That would be my my concern.
Don?
Do you see any problem with that? Or should I make another motion?
Couple of things. So I did draft the resolution in a way that that indicates that the appointment isn't final unless it's subject to a contract approved by the city attorney. I put that in there specifically because, obviously, once I start talking with Mr. Thompson, there may be terms that we come to that I I will be reporting back to you, or Amy Sal will, or both of us will, to let you know and keep you very up to date as we know those terms. Certainly, I would accept council feedback on those terms. Should I get a number of objections to those terms, then obviously, we're going to have to bring it back to you at another meeting, either a special meeting or in September, to go forward. But should the council review those and be satisfied with those individually, those terms would then be reduced into a contract. That contract will be presented to Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson would presumably sign that contract, having agreed to those terms. That contract will be brought to you in this, at the September meeting for ratification. But if your motion, Ms. Colka, were to include a start date and a term, that could be included into and we could move forward accordingly.
A start date, you mean for me to put in my motion the start date?
Right, the the appointment of the interim to begin on blank, and then for a term not to exceed blank, or, you know, something, some basic terminology that I can start from with the appointment contract.
Okay, that sounds good. So, Mr. Thompson, I have a question for you. When can you start?
Well, I appreciate the question. I I am working sort of part time now and feel an obligation to my current employer to treat him properly. Now, having said that, I have told him that I was having this discussion this evening. So he's he's aware of what's going on. Certainly, I could be there Friday, a week from tomorrow. Perhaps Thursday, a week from today. And it may well be that I could then, it's possible, I want to talk with my current employer again, as as I said I would. It's it's possible that that would, I could just continue thereafter. Worst case scenario would be a week from tomorrow, and then the following Friday. My my preference would be to get started as soon as possible.
So if we allowed you some time to negotiate some of the terms of your contract and give your employer a few weeks, would September first be too early? Or do you think you could start before then, given all that scenario?
Well, September first would not be too early. I would, I would try to work with my my current employer to shorten that as much as possible.
So we, could we do on or before September first that you begin?
That would be fine, and that that would give us the flexibility I
I don't want to do any one. I'm gonna make sure you have the time that you need to to obviously shore up the ends you need and be able to negotiate in good faith, you know, and be able to do the things that you need to do. So I would, I would propose that my 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 motion basically says that to make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Mark Thompson as interim city manager to begin on or before September first, and to authorize the mayor to execute the resolution on behalf of the city. And unless Mr. Denault has anything else that should be added, I think then that's enough.
The term, how long?
Six months. Should we do four months first and then six months? I mean, I I don't think we need a term
Not to exceed six months.
Not to exceed six months, fair enough.
I still second it.
So we do have a motion and a second. Don, you're good with everything. We'll start negotiations, okay?
I think I have very good direction. Amy Sal is on, of course, if she's, if she thinks we're missing anything, I defer to her on that, but I think we have great direction to talk with Mr. Thompson further, get you guys a really good update and a really solid comprehensive understanding of what the contract will look like, and then move forward from there.
Amy Sal, you good with that?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, Don, I have a question, techn, logistic question. Would we be approving this contract before Mr. Thompson begins his engagement with us?
No, what I what I proposed in my last statement before that one was we would ratify the contract with the understanding that everybody's had an opportunity to review it and had not provided significant objections that I need to work through before finalizing it, much like we did, I believe we did something similar with was it the Lions Club? I don't know. It seems like we've had a precedent for this in some ways, where I try to move forward with getting it done as efficiently as possible, because we meet only once a month. And then bring it to you for ratification, but it would be understood and signed by the mayor and myself before that, absent four objections. And then he would be able to begin pursuant to the agreement.
Four objections? That would seem to be a vote at that point. I'm just
I understand.
In previous, well, let me, let me finish. In previous situations like this, we have held a special meeting when we hired Mr. Sodowsky, we had a four minute meeting. And that was simply to to put things in the right order, make sure we were all on the same page, and that we weren't putting, as they say, the cart before the horse. By, and I don't want to put Mr. Thompson in in an uncomfortable position. I would rather he be comfortable with it, the council and the public, so. I would prefer to have a special meeting, once the details are hammered out, just so we can all be have an affirmative vote on this before he begins.
And just to to finish that up, that is, that is a great point, Mr. Lessig. And I don't think it's mandatory, but it's certainly a best practice, and it's probably a past practice as well. I just felt that in the interest of time, council has some latitude, and it really, I defer to council at the end of the day as to whether or not you would like that affirmative voice before he begins, or whether or not you're comfortable getting this moving and then ratifying it after he's been here for a week or two.
I, for one, Don, am comfortable with your approach, your original approach, that, you know, it it's it's new, it's different, and like you said, a precedent has been started, and I I feel comfortable moving forward with the motion and the second and the resolution that you drafted.
Lions Club Carnival was, it should not be a precedent for hiring a city manager, and that one took months, and we did vote on it, so. Before the, before the carnival, and I hate to use that as an example. I think it's best practice. I I wait, I have the floor. I think it's a best practice that we hire people, hire them properly, negotiate a contract, and vote on this. That's my position. I, the council can certainly overrule me. And that's, or vote, vote any way you want to. But I believe that is a good way to get started with any, any employee.
And I do think, Mr. Mayor and council, I think I misspoke. I wasn't, it wasn't Lions Club I was thinking of. That was a whole different process. I believe it was the RFP for HR Consulting Services, where I circulated a lot of information to council, kept everyone apprised, received feedback, and we went forward. That was the example. It was on my mind.
Yeah, if if it, let it, let's play it out. If it, it comes to the point where we feel a meeting is necessary, we can always call, you know, I can call a special meeting. It's not a big deal. Obviously, we try to save the funds of the community as best we can. If it's not needed, we don't need it.
I concur.
Is there a salary range for this position?
I believe that's part of the negotiations.
The range that I was seeing from candidates was between eighty-four hundred and twelve thousand per month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the floor still. Any other comments and questions on that motion? I see none. I'll bring it back to Ms. Dolan for a vote.
Okay, Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blanke.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Colka.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
Based on the procedure, no. I do like Mr. Thompson, though, thank you.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Number one Wiki.
Yes.
The motion carries. Well, thank you, Mark Thompson, for your time, and we look forward to talking to you soon. Amy, Don, we look forward to hear, seeing your updates as soon as possible.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate the support and and look forward to working with you and and hope that I can get started as soon as possible. I'm very excited about the opportunity, forward to meeting you all and being in attendance at your next meeting.
Great. Councilwoman Baranski?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Denault and possibly Amy Sal. I'm not totally sure. Do we need to have a interim interim or this?
But it would be an acting.
And, okay, yeah, can you tell us, Don, if, what, if anything, we need to do, let's do it right now, so that we don't leave a gap?
Absolutely, and I was going to bring that up. You beat me to it. Very important that we now talk about as a council, what to do for the interim period until Mr. Thompson comes on board, and with the assumption that he does. So we have probably, as he mentioned, at least a week, possibly two, where we will have no city manager for the city of Frazier at the moment. That leaves it up to council as to whether or not you are comfortable with the city That leaves it up to council as to whether or not you are comfortable with the city department heads continuing to run the ship as they always have. And then just authorizing someone to either be an authorized signer so that things that need to get signed, dispersments that need to get made, any business of the city that the manager would normally do on behalf of the city and acting with full authority of the city, that business would be conducted by somebody appointed by the council. If, in fact, the council preferred to make it simpler and just appoint an acting city manager, that is another way to go. So, it really just comes down to, for the council tonight, your comfort level in terms of, do we let the process continue to move forward with department heads doing their roles, employees doing all of their roles, and then just authorize somebody who can be in charge of signing things, including payroll, including dispersments? Or are we more comfortable as a council with appointing somebody to be acting city manager if only for the role of signing and oversight and making sure that if something unforeseen happens, we have somebody in that role who can take the reins and move the city through it?
Well, Don, I've spent more time here. Obviously, we talked about the last couple of weeks because of this upcoming situation. And I think that we can get through if it's a week or two, maybe just having someone able to sign checks and then monitor things as we go along, working with the department has with the agendas as I have been. But that's totally up to council. But at this point, my concern is basically the check signing at this time. Councilwoman Blanky. Unmute Kathy.
I agree that we need someone, of course, to sign the checks. And I, Mayor, the other check, the other signer for checks and whatever would be from finances, is that correct?
I talked about offering it to Mr. John Walters, who's a finance person. But being a non-employee of the city, I didn't know if that made a difference or not.
Okay, I believe there are some documents that require two signatures, correct?
Yes, there are some that would.
Okay, so I would feel comfortable with someone that can sign checks and a pair of eyes. Although everyone's experience and whatever, I think we have to have a point of communication. We can't leave the city without any kind of a chain of command, so to speak. Thank you. My opinion.
Councilwoman Boranski.
Yeah, Don, what, if anything, is the downside to appointing an acting city manager as opposed to just a person to authorize signatures for this interim period?
What is the downside to appointing an acting versus an authorized signer?
Right.
I don't know that there's a downside to having a leader in the leadership role. Obviously, there could be circumstances unforeseen by the council in doing that and giving, and bestowing that upon someone. You would hope that whoever you chose would be professional and have a fiduciary duty to the city and certainly do their best to do the right thing by the community. So, I suppose that would be the only real downside I can see would be some sort of unforeseen action that was unanticipated or unexpected. The
What about the opposite?
Opposite. The opposite of that would be in the event of something unforeseen. You know, the COVID-19 takes a horrible turn, or we have a sewer problem or something comes up where somebody needs to take the leadership role. Every department head has a role and knows it and knows it well and will do it well. But sometimes you just need that focal point to communicate through council or have that person that kind of reins in all the reports and brings it all to you from an information funnel. Do we hope and pray that doesn't happen? Of course. So, then if you take out the calamity and the emergency concerns, I think the only thing left would be just who would be responsible for putting together your next agenda packet? Because, you know, obviously, the city clerk does, I'm sure, the bulk of that. But there are probably some things that come from the city manager in terms of, again, bringing all the information together through the funnel. And I believe your next agenda packet would be due right around the first day that Mr. Thompson could begin, roughly. You know, somewhere around August 31st, September 1st, if my math is anywhere close to accurate. So, there is that, too, to consider that, you know, obviously, the department heads can get it done. But sometimes just having a person gather all of that together isn't a bad thing.
Okay. And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Amy Sell as the acting city manager and approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Don, one of my questions on that is the same I had with John Walters is being a contract employee for the city, not a direct employee. How does that work as far as signing checks?
Right. So, I did run that through John Walters and Amy Sell as well. We've talked about that issue. It doesn't appear to be an issue. I don't see a legal issue with it. They didn't seem to see any audit issues or finance issues. Really, as Mr. Walters explained, the importance of the resolution is for banks to know that council authorized this person. And we already have, if the motion were to pass, Amy Sell in an official role with the city. It's not a department head role or an administrative officer role, but she is in a role for the city. This will be part of that role, no different than if you took somebody in-house and added this short-term title for a week or two. The difference being that, obviously, she isn't a direct employee. But this would put her in that role if it were passed, or anybody else that were authorized to do this. And we don't see any legal issues with that.
Councilman Lessig.
Yeah, I don't believe Amy has any city manager or municipal management experience. My primary concern is beyond signing, there is a fiduciary responsibility to signing means we're spending money and our average spend is over a million dollars a month. Actually, it's more than that. So, this is an additional responsibility beyond just saying, "I'm the signer on the account." What is Mr. Walters comfortable with working directly with her so that he says, "These bills are okay. These bills are appropriate"? Because otherwise, we should really hold off on spending any money until, we should be approving the bills. Someone in a position of authority with the city, elected official or an administrative officer, should be making those decisions rather than simply someone that has the ability to sign or access bank accounts. That's my concern. It's all about fiduciary responsibility and experience. So, I'm concerned about this. And it's an indefinite period of time. It may be a week, it may be two, it may be three, but that is my concern. Thank you.
Councilwoman Boranski.
Yes, do you have a solution for that concern, Councilmember Lessig?
Yes, pick someone else. No offense to Amy Sell. She was hired to recruit HR. She was required, she was to come here. And I like her in that position. I voted for that position. And I would like her to continue that. And she's also the CEO of her own HR company or consulting company. And so, I, no offense to Amy, but it's, we need somebody. We just took someone and a comment was made that we exhausted their knowledge. And now we are putting someone in the position who, to my understanding, based upon her credentials, that has no knowledge of this position on an actionable and management level. So, I would just hesitate to make a decision like that and put her in an uncomfortable position. And then after that is done, return back to the recruiting and process improvement part.
Did you have a person in mind that meets the criteria you're setting forth that we could consider?
We have Administrative Officer Kelly Dolan. We have Mr. Denault is our city attorney and has been for two years and has vast municipal experience. So, either one of those people. Someone with closer ties to the city, with a much better understanding of the finances, where expenditures happen. I would hate to see something untoward happen where money got misspent during this short-term period.
Councilwoman Kalka.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Amy comes from an HR background, and every single one of our department heads are going to be available for her. So, I would think that if any checks come across her desk that she needs to sign, if she has any questions whatsoever, that every single one of our department heads, they're going to make themselves available and answer every single question that she has. So, for me, this is, for the short term, this is not a big deal. This is not a big deal at all. Because our department heads are not going to keep closed book. They're going to avail themselves to Amy. And I would expect, because Amy has many, many years of experience doing this, that if she has any questions, that she will have that kind of communication. And there will be no more issues with regard to the specific checks that come across her desk that she must or needs to sign. She has questions about where they come from or what they're about or whatever. And not only that, that will actually help her become way more integrated in our city and what we're doing and how we're spending money and what it's for. I think it's an amazing opportunity for her to actually get integrated in where we're coming from and where the money is actually going. So, for me, I think it's a great idea in the short term for her to get acclimated with regard to where the money is actually going and puts her in charge of what we're doing with that money. And then will then facilitate discussions with those department heads so that she understands and has a better understanding of what's going on. So, for me, it's a very clear answer.
Well, let's ask the person who's here what they think. Amy Sell, what's your position on this?
Well, I'm humbled and flattered to be even considered in this role. I do have other obligations, as Councilmember Lessig so eloquently stated. Realistically, I could be in the office two days a week and spend about 10 to 15 hours. So, I can, signing checks and trying to keep payroll going, if I am the only option, I would want to serve Fraser. But I am very comfortable deferring on this option. I think there's an amazing staff at the City of Fraser. And I am, you know, my first choice would probably be for another employee that does know the city and community well. I agree. I thank you, Ms. Kalka. That's an amazing opportunity and growth, and I'm very excited about that. But I also, realistically looking at what's best for Fraser, I'm not convinced that I am. But if I am asked to serve, I would be happy to do this. But I do really want to do what's best for Fraser, and I'll leave it at that.
Great. Thank you for your honesty. Councilwoman Shornak.
Yeah. Don, I didn't hear you weighing in here. I want to know how you feel about signing checks.
You know, Mr. Lessig's points are very good ones. Everybody has good points. It's one of those things where, as a council, what is your comfort level? Are you comfortable with an administrative officer under the charter having this responsibility? Or are you comfortable with someone who's doing another role for you, having this responsibility? You know, what is your comfort level? At the end of the day, I think anybody that you choose, from the names we all know, will do a great job at it. So, as for me, I'd be a little bit reluctant to be in a role where the lawyer is signing off. I have no objection to being the second set of eyes. And I'd be happy to take that on, you know, next week and the week after to make sure that everything is looked at. But I think that really is my role, is to look at things and make sure that things are being done the right way. And I wouldn't want to put myself in the role of doing them the right way and then also being the one who looks at them to make sure they're done the right way. So, I would, you know, be reluctant to take on that dual role. I think it's just, it's only two weeks or less, but it's just better if I don't, I think.
Okay. How about you, Mayor? I'm serious. You're the mayor. People elected you. I have to imagine people elected you because they believe that you will do what's right as far as it's financially and fiduciary for the city. So, as the mayor, I mean, I realize, you know, right now, you're going from part-time to a little bit more than part-time over this little bit of lapse of time, but it's only for two weeks.
Yeah, I'll do anything for the city.
I'll withdraw my motion. I'll revise my motion.
I have been spending more time because of anticipating this, about doing some things. But it's whatever council feels. If they were obligated, I would, we're candid and have John to do that. But, and with Don oversight, I wouldn't have any problem.
I would feel very comfortable with you being the signer, John being the other signer if necessary, and then Don being our auditor, if you will, for about a choice of words, Don. I think that would be, I mean, there's a lot of cities that have council slash mayor run cities. I think Warren's one of them.
That's not our charter.
No, I know that's not our charter, but right now, we're in uncharted territory, and I don't see a problem with that.
We can't go into uncharted territory on whether an elected official under a strong council, weak mayor, city manager, former government can now take on an administrative role and approve bills. Is there enabling language in the charter or the state statutes to do that?
I don't think there's disabling in our charter.
So, it is, it's an excellent legal question, of course. Can the mayor of the City of Fraser, as the chartered mayor, take on an administrative role? There is no answer to that. As long as we don't have a conflict of interest or an incompatible office situation, my initial inclination is that it could be a very limited authorization to sign things. We do that quite a bit with the mayor's role when it comes to contracts and other types of things where part of the motion I give to you is always to authorize the mayor to execute it on behalf of the city. So, executing that role, I have no real legal objection to that that I can think of right now. Obviously, putting him in an acting city manager role can't happen. That's an incompatible office situation. So, I would not be able to go that far for that one.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about acting city manager, just simply signing.
Yeah. I'm not making any decisions to council.
Exactly. Just paying the bills.
Councilwoman Blanky.
Those are decisions.
I think that the idea with the uncertainty of everything, and I think people are probably watching, residents, there are uncharted circumstances going on in different situations that we're not at liberty to discuss. Normally, we could have, you know, used an employee, not used an employee, but would have designated an employee, so on and so forth. But I think that, I don't think, I do agree with Councilwoman Shornak because I hear humility and apprehension in Amy Sell's. I, Donald walked in fire for Fraser. He was homegrown here. So, I would like to thank the mayor for coming, because he would do anything. So, I'm going to defer to Patrice. She would like to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to have Mayor Carnegie, for the next two weeks or less, sign the necessary checks on behalf of the city and with review of Mr. Walters and also Don. Our turn, Number One.
Second.
Councilwoman Boranski.
Two things. I still have my motion technically on the table.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. But, and I don't have a problem taking it off. But the question that I have for you is, are you appointing him acting city manager? Because to me, I think you have to have, we are under an emergency order. And we're about to extend that emergency order if we pass that. And to not have someone tasked with that, to me, is just the wrong message.
Yep.
Then we find ourselves in a conundrum.
Mayor Proton, Number One Wiki.
Yeah, I agree that we need an acting city, acting city manager during this process. So, I would support your original motion to nominate. I understand Amy's hesitation, but I also heard the humble and flattery in there in that I think she would look out for the best interests of the city. And I think she came to us with impeccable credentials that I would not hesitate to put her in that position as an acting for this brief period of time.
So anyone else want to weigh in before we, we can just vote on one and then if it doesn't pass, vote on the other?
Uh, Councilwoman Blacky.
Thank you.
Unmute, but please.
Because Patrice keeps making me turn it on and off. Okay. We, we all know, we all know here, you know, I'm hearing a trust issue here, like the AVs that, uh, the accounts payable that we get in our packet every month, those checks that were sent out have already been spent. They've been in the mail, they've gone to the, um, cred, uh, to the companies and we sit here and we, we, uh.
Approve it.
Thank you, Mike. Approve it. Long after that money's gone. I, having been here for many years, there are tiers and there are levels of, uh, with the banks and whatever, with the department heads, there are checks and balances through this. This is a short period of time and I think we just need to do what we need to do because we have to follow our charter. I, I would be willing for Mike certainly, but we have to do what's legal all at the same time. So I think, uh, I agree with Mayor Protem Winawicki, we should come to a decision on this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Colko.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a question for Don. You know, Don, every month we have to approve those bills, right? So if for whatever reason we decided we didn't want to approve a bill that had previously been paid, doesn't the vendor get notice prior to payment that it is subject to council approval?
Um, I don't know the.
I don't think so.
I'm going to guess not. There would be no way to do that kind of notification. Those bills are being paid because council has appropriated funds and administration as the executive branch is allowed to execute, uh, the will of the council up to the amount of the appropriations. So that's really how that works.
Right. As long as the money is in the budget and that's part of the expenses or expenses, expense that was part of a budget in any type, in, in any department and those monies then get, they get pre-approved, in other words.
In, in other words, it's council has said you can spend a thousand dollars this year and the bill comes in for a hundred dollars, administration is allowed to spend that. That's how, you know, budgeting works in Michigan. So, um, the only, the only thing, when you're approving the bills, I, I do smile about that because it is after the fact. It's almost ratifying the payments that the city manager or the management, um, executed already for you.
Yeah.
For the city. And, um, you know, were you ever, if you were ever to pull one out and say, we disapprove of this, we don't like buying, uh, new toilets for City Hall, uh, it, it would be too late at that point for the most part, but you might be able to convince administration to terminate the contract if the toilets haven't been delivered and, you know, you could work through those things. But for the most part, though, that money's already spent and appropriated and, um, you're really just mostly receiving and filing, but we call it approval of the payment of the bills.
Okay. I just, I just had, that was just a logistical question. That was it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we still have a motion on the floor. Amy did not remove that motion, so if everyone's upset, we can act on that motion.
Repeat the motion, please.
Kelly, could you be so kind or no? I can try again. Okay. The motion, what, hold on, I gotta get Don's language. The motion was to appoint Amy Sell as the acting city manager. Um, and I, I, I guess that's it. I don't know. I'm kind of lost now, Don. In, the interim acting city manager.
No, I believe, I believe I could, if I could offer a correction, um, I believe the motion may have been or should be, if it wasn't, a motion to.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did it wrong. Yep. Next paragraph. Motion to appoint Amy Sell as the interim city manager.
No, acting.
Acting. Okay. You tell me, Don, and I'll say that's what it is.
My preference would be that it be a motion to approve the resolution appointing Amy Sell as acting city manager for the City of Frazier, um, as presented.
That is my motion.
The resolution that I provided to you had all, all the terminology that I would want in it. So if you approve the resolution, you're approving those terms.
All right. And you'll get the resolution to Kelly to put into the minutes, Don, if it passes.
I would, yeah, it's gonna be, we'll ask Kelly Dylan, she'll be asked to, um, attest to the, each resolution that you've adopted this evening as a city clerk.
That is my motion then.
Your next second again.
Let's see, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Dylan, could you please do a vote?
Okay, Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blankey.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
No.
Member Colko.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
No.
Member Shornak.
Um, Miss Respect, yes.
Member Winawicki.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Good. Okay, thank you, Amy, for taking it on.
I'll be leaning on everyone here to, for your trust and steer the ship for as short a period of time as possible. Thank you.
Okay.
You're gonna be great.
It gives you incentive, you and Don incentive to get that contract.
Yeah. Now we know what you're doing first thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I'd be glad to meet with you on a agenda in a couple of weeks. Thank you all. Okay, I'd like to remove from the table the discussion of Frazier hazard mitigation plan. So I make a motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
A motion and a second. Yeah, roll call vote, please.
Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blankey.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Colko.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawicki.
Yes.
Okay, I see discussion of the City of Frazier hazard mitigation plan, interim director Pettis, you have the floor.
Yeah, this is the plan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, you, you received this plan last month. I know it was short notice. That's when I got it from the county. Um, have you guys have any questions on it? It is a approved plan through the State of Michigan and through FEMA. It just needs to be filed. Uh, part of that filing is it needs to be ratified or approved, um, through every municipality that falls under, um, Macomb County Emergency Management.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Baranski.
Yep, the only question I have, now that I've read it all, um, has, it seems primarily yourself and then, um, Nick as the interim director of the DPW. Have you guys both at least acknowledged and reviewed it to make sure that if we had the funding, because everything that's in that plan is subject to funding, if we had the funding, that would be on your priority list to fix so that if we encountered the natural disasters and had had the funding and didn't do it, that would create liability for us. So as long as you two have signed off and any other department had, I have no problem with the plan as suggested.
Was there a question? Yeah, Nick, Nick and I, BJ and I, um, we've, we've looked at this. These are the three things. Like I said, the, the tree trimming of the, um, of our drains, it's noted in here, that's a, uh, the drain commission, the power lines, the trimming that, again, a lot of these things are out of our control, the, the lines, these are three things that were noted that could be issues if not, um, and, and they just noted, again, we don't have a backup generator, um, and one of, at our, uh, I believe it's, um, at Hidden Pine. It's a city-owned building. It's just noting in there that you don't have it, that if we lost power for a substantial amount of time, you have to either bring in, um, portable generators or make a different type of arrangements for that. It's just acknowledging, um, and as you see, every municipality in Macomb County has some, um, some hazards, some issues that, um, we know that they're, that they're there and that we'll have to address them if that specific, uh, emergency or event happens. So, yeah, Nick and I have gone over this several times.
Awesome. Thank you. And I'm good with it. I'd make a motion to approve the hazardous mitigation plan as submitted by interim director Pettis.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Councilwoman Shornak.
Yeah, my question is, I thought Hidden Pine, so I'm assuming the senior center, um, even though I know it's currently closed, is supposed to be a refuge. So, okay, then why wouldn't we have a backup generator then?
There is one there.
I thought Director Pettis just said there wasn't.
The apartments, living, the living apartments.
Not the senior, not the activity center, we're, I'm not talking.
Oh, the apartments. Okay, I just thank you for the clarification because I'm like, if that's supposed to be something, yeah, I knew that was a, a center that everybody could go to, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilwoman Colko.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have one quick question about the checks and balances with regard to this. Is there any kind of like meetings that take place like once a year to make sure that we're complying with this mitigation package? Make sure that the plan is, you know, that we're, that we're adopting today, that we meet once a year, that, you know, the department heads meet once a year, just make sure that we, whatever is in there, we've complied with. That's my only issue because there's a lot of stuff.
Well, I have emergency management, minimum, we have them quarterly, emergency management meetings. That's, um, yeah, and we talk about these things, we update them constantly. This is a, I believe it's for five years. But, yeah, we do, um, we haven't done a tabletop exercise in a while, but we've had experience doing it. And basically what a hazardous mitigation plan and what emergency management is, is the players or the people involved working together, knowing these people that if we have an incident, because there's not a major emergency and, and the perfect example or a good example is on 15 mile road, that's not just a police and fire emergency, the DPW is there, the road commissions, where you have flooding, that we need backhoes and we need heavy equipment and we need to move sand or we need to move things, that Nick and I, because all of these emergencies, you have to mitigate yourself. You, I can't rely on anybody else when emergency happens because Macomb County has their emergency, Roseville, so you got to be able to take care of your issue for a substantial amount of time before you're going to receive help. So all these emergencies that we have in the, like I said, the 15 mile road with, uh, with Nick and I, we worked on that together and, uh, um, you know, there's a certain point where it becomes, turned over from a, from an emergency scene to more of a DPW and a, and, uh, the, the Macomb County Public Works along with Nick working on that. So we work together all the time and that's anything that we do. If it's a large emergency, even basic fire things, we work with the, uh, DPW all the time, the building department, the building explosion, the DPW's out there shutting off water for us. So it's just the ability, again, just that we, we work together, we know who to communicate with and we have their numbers and we coordinate and work together. That's essentially what this is on a larger scale.
Okay, so the short answer is yes, right? Yes, four times a year.
What's that?
At least four times a year, because you said quarterly.
Yeah, we were, I was doing emergency managements every week for a period of time, but we, a minimum, emergency management gets together, uh, we have quarterly meetings, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? I see now, Ms. Dylan, could you please call a vote?
Um, member Lessig was the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blankey.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Colko.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawicki.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Oh, item D, discussion item to increase to two city council meetings per month. Uh, Ms. Baranski, I'll leave you this one since you asked me to put it on the agenda this month.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as everyone can see and everyone's aware, we have a packed agenda this month. We've had a packed agenda for at least the last six months. Um, there's a lot of moving parts in the city right now between contract negotiations and hirings and, um, new city managers, um, uh, closed door sessions. I was, want to make a proposal that we just for September, October and November, implement a second monthly meeting for each of those months so that we can make sure that we have scheduled accordingly and can plan accordingly and handle the tasks administratively with the appropriate time and resources so that each of the topics are being handled without rushing or going into the midnight hour. It's not fair to our employees who have to get up the next day. It's not fair to our residents who are trying to stay up and pay attention. It's not fair to council, obviously. And I feel as though, because we have so much still in the short term, I don't want it to be a long term, I don't want to forever have two meetings a month. I, I really am hoping that with the changes in the, in the momentum that we have going, this is hopefully going to be a short-term thing. But the other thing that I would suggest, since we're having, if, if it passed, would be that we would have a very structured system so that the first meeting of the month, we would handle maybe, and this is subject to, you know, mayor and, and city manager's discretion, but maybe the first meeting of the month is parks and rock and DPW and the second meeting of the month is public safety and IT or, 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 um, city clerk or other business. So they don't have to come to two meetings a month absent an emergency. So we're not increasing exponentially costs with overtime or comp time or whatnot. But then we have focused meetings. So we're dealing with Nick and the DPW or we're dealing with, um, Mike and the, in the public safety department in a focused manner, as well as the closed-door sessions. And then also we already know the timeframes for when we want to schedule interviews for the interim city, or I'm sorry, for the permanent, uh, city manager or any other positions. Um, and so that's what I wanted to bring up to council and, and get feedback on. And I would therefore specifically advocate that we, my motion would be that we add a meet, a regular calendar, a regular council meeting, September 24th, October 22nd, and then because Thanksgiving is that Thursday, I would move it to that Tuesday, November 24th, knowing we could always cancel the X, the second meeting of the month if we didn't need it.
I'm sorry, Amy, can you give me the date of November again?
Yeah, my, my thought of that Tuesday instead of the Thursday, but I'm flexible to whatever the pleasure of council, obviously. Because I, I would love for you all to come over for Thanksgiving, but hopefully we can do that. I just don't know if COVID will allow us to do that.
And just for reference, uh, Amy talked to me this spot before, and I did do some checks and it's about $3,500 of, of, of extra meeting. And that's just a quick estimate of, uh, all the employees' time, council pay, like TV, uh, it's probably pretty close to what I can, you know, all with. Uh, anybody else? Councilwoman Colko.
Thank you. I guess my whole thing is, can we, if we do these second meetings, can we start them at six and can we, I mean, the whole idea is sort of blow through them as quick as possible.
Agreed.
I mean, the first meeting, I mean, the first meetings, we should have like regular business, I think, and then anything extra should be then pushed off until, or the special meetings, um, and then just get through them. If we got a couple or two things, fine, but I mean, I would assume, and Mayor, maybe you guys can help me, but, um, if, if our meetings last an hour, the special meetings last an hour, is this gonna cost like $36, $37?
Yeah.
All right, well then, let's load them up. Let's make sure we get on, when we need to get done.
Well, that's what I said, you gotta get your money's worth.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's fine with me. I don't care. I just want to make sure that it's the most bang for our buck or if you can get out early, let's keep it, you know, bit short and sweet or, you know, we'll get as much done as we possibly can, obviously. So we do have a lot to do. We are, you know, we are definitely, uh, moving forward. So I, I anticipate as well as what Amy said, that there's going to be a lot to do in the next, in the next three extra meetings, if you will, that we really do need. So we do have a lot to do. We are, you know, we are definitely moving forward. So I anticipate as well as what Amy said, that there's going to be a lot to do in the next, in the next three extra meetings, if you will, that we really do need to hash out between now and Christmas. I think that's kind of the goal, is to really make some massive changes and changes and things that we need to do. So, yeah, I mean, I agree.
Did you say Christmas?
That's pre-Mountain Christmas. It used to be slow, man, but it ain't slow no more.
Since there's not a city mayor in it, Drew, and I don't think John's on, do we have to do like a budget amendment? Because we know that it's going to be over the budget for as far as finances. Don, would you?
My best answer at this point would be, it won't be a mandatory budget amendment unless the expense is going to exceed city council's budgeted allotment. So for right now, you can only assume it might, but you won't know until year end. But I'm sure Don will give you better advice as we start getting colder.
Yeah, basically, we've had a two months, the last, two meetings the last three, four months. So we're up there in budget.
Mike?
Councilwoman Likie.
Thank you. Mike, I was just wondering, you know, you and I talked about this years ago. We, I think our pay has been cut in half, correct? Our meeting, per meeting of a year or two ago. I thought we came to 1,500 to 2,000 a meeting. But you included everything?
Employees' time, videotaping, everything.
So, okay, so they don't take comp time? I mean, I thought.
They do get comp time.
Okay, so, but what I'm saying is budget-wise, it wouldn't be a monetary amount? I mean, they're switching hour for hour of work?
No. If you add additional costs.
Okay, but I just think it's important that people realize we already reduced our pay a year or two ago. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, what are we?
Yeah, I'm encouraged by, number one, I like your wording, Councilwoman Baransky, about we could set the meetings and then always cancel them if we if we decide that we don't need them. But I'm also encouraged by Mr. Thompson's statements about where he, you know, is going to focus over the next three or four months moving forward. And I'm, I'm pretty confident that we, we probably will end up canceling some of the scheduled meetings because it seems like he's, he's already hit the ground running. And I think, you know, I would, I would support just scheduling them, knowing that we can cancel them and look forward to the advancement with Mr. Thompson and also the, the acting city manager, Amy.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilwoman Lessig.
Yeah, two questions, two things. One is, until we go over, until the council budget was exceeded, no budget amendment? Amendment would be necessary. The second question, and this is to clarify what Mr. Winawiki said. So that basically tentatively putting these on the schedule and then deciding it, when it's time of whether those meetings go forward or are we putting these in place to then take a council action to remove that meeting from the schedule? I guess that's the question. If we're going to vote to put them on the schedule, would we vote to take them off the schedule as well?
The way I envisioned it would be, so let's take October, for example, because I can already anticipate September just based on some, I mean, we're not even halfway through this meeting and we've been at it for two hours and 20 minutes. So, but the way I envisioned it is, let's say, at the first meeting in October, we banged through everything. There's not a lot, not enough left to justify it that requires attention within the next two weeks. At that meeting, we would then make a motion to cancel the second meeting in October. That's how I envisioned it in my head because I am very cost-conscious, which is why I also advocated dividing it up so that I don't have every department head at every single meeting, both for their own mental well-being, because these can get long, and also just as a cost savings. So that's how I, assuming that that would be proper, Don would have to tell us if we could do that. But that's how I envisioned it in my head when I came up with this.
Okay, but I was, Mr. Winawiki said something a little differently, and I just want to clarify because if we put them in stone now and then we take them off later, I don't understand the difference than tentatively scheduling them and then deciding later to have one. That would seem to be the way I'd like to do it, where we make a conscious decision at a meeting to say, yes, we will have a meeting in two weeks, rather than put into, we're going to end up having almost 25 meetings this year. A few years ago, that was a point of contention among the residents and that we were, that we were having a lot of meetings. So I think we can get the business done efficiently. Our meetings are long. A lot of other communities have shorter meetings, so maybe we can take some best practices from them going forward to make these efficient so we can get done at a reasonable hour. As a watcher of these meetings for many, many years, no one will watch a full five-hour meeting after the fact. If we can get these down to three hours, there's going to be more people and I think the public is better informed. But that's my, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, the only downside to not pre-scheduling them, every agenda has to look like it does today. And then we have to spend 15, 20, first of all, we have to prep for it because we don't know how the vote will be. And then all of the department heads have to be present, and then we have to spend time tabling or postponing and modifying the agenda. I would rather, that was why I proposed three months, set it in stone. And if, heaven forbid, we actually are as efficient, which I, it's a great point that that council member Winawiki brought up, that we have the luxury of not needing it, we cancel it after the fact, not before. That's just my thought.
Councilwoman Colka.
Thank you. I just want to double check. Is there a motion on the floor or are we just talking about?
We're just talking at this point.
Okay, so can I make a motion then to increase the city council meetings to two per month, starting in September? With the first, I guess it would be the first and second Thursday of each month with the exception, starting in September and with the exception being November 24th instead of November 26th, starting at 6 o'clock on the second meeting days.
Mr. Denault.
I second.
Sorry, I was just pointing out, it's the second and fourth Thursday, I believe, right? Not the first.
Let me just rephrase the whole thing. I apologize. I'd like to make a motion to increase the city council meetings to two per month, being on the, the second and fourth Thursdays of every month, starting in September, with the exception that November be on the 24th, which is a Tuesday, and each of the second meetings be, start at 6 a.m. or 6 p.m.
Not coming in at 6 a.m.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Shortek.
I said.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You just muted yourself.
You're muted.
Okay, there we go. So the only thing that I was concerned about is the compensation board only allowed us, I, and I could be wrong on the meeting amounts, but it was either 18 or 20. So I don't know if we have to get their permission, if we are, if Mr. Lessig is correct in saying that we're headed to 25. We may have to wait on this particular motion and postpone it till next month till we verify that. Because I don't know if they have to, maybe Mr. Denault can answer if we have to get their approval. Because if they're the ones who set that, we may have to get their approval.
So. Is it special meetings or regular meetings?
No, meetings, period.
All meetings.
All meetings.
They limit the number of special meetings we can have.
They did.
Could I weigh in?
Yeah, please. That's interesting. I'm not aware of that.
Well, I just want to, Patrice and I were there when that happened. And I believe that the decision was that compensation commission cannot set, cannot determine the number of meetings, but they can determine the number, they may be able to determine the number of meetings that we get paid for. So we could come to meetings and there would be no money to pay us. But that, the first part, I believe, is correct, that they could not deter, they could not set, they could not say we can only have 12 meetings. They, they can just determine how much we get paid.
Okay.
So that was, that's my recollection. I'm not the attorney. But that was a point of contention and we did discuss that at a meeting in the past. Would you, is that similar to what you believe, Patrice?
Yes, it is. So that's why I'm thinking just for right now. I totally understand where Ms. Baransky is coming from. I agree that we have a lot of stuff to do and our meetings go on in perpetuity. So I would just like us to first make sure, I mean, I honestly don't care if we get paid. We only get paid $75, so I don't care. But I would just want to make sure that we're not limited and that we're not doing anything outside of the realm of what we are allowed to do without, better word, permission.
Instead of just Mike's comment is.
You're muted, Mike.
My comments relate to Amy and the motion. Amy mentioned September, October, November. And Susan, that would need to be part of your motion. Otherwise, it goes on forever. It's like your motion forever.
No, her motion is only three specific dates.
Those three months only. Okay.
And my thought process just was that, well, Don will answer it. I was going to say, if we can't do it, then at the next meeting, we change it. But if we don't do it now, we go into September with a packed agenda and then we're talking about it again.
Councilwoman Colka.
Thank you. So if I amended my motion that just said on the second day, the second motions, the second Thursday of the month, we don't get paid, it doesn't count, right?
Yeah.
We can't do that?
Michael's right. Legally, we have to get paid.
Yeah, you can't do it for free.
We have to be taxed on it is really the legal ramification of it.
So, yes, yeah, then, then I would propose then, maybe we should reevaluate this in September. With the understanding and everybody that's here, keep your calendar clear if you are interested in wanting to have a second meeting because we may need them and we can reevaluate it then. And then we can table stop if we want to do it as we go along. I mean.
What are we looking for between now and then, then? Just clarification that we can legally do it?
Probably.
Yeah, the commission will allow us to do it. How many meetings have we had and how many are allowed to have this year?
So are we directing Don to look into that for us to get a definitive answer or is someone else on council going to take?
Don can. I'll be glad to, whoever would like, whoever would like. I'll take it on.
Don? Keeper of all records?
I'm happy to look. I'm happy to look, but I would have to rely on Kelly Dolan anyway to get the minutes of the last meeting of the compensation commission. Because I don't, this, this discussion sounds very familiar to me, but I don't know if I have those minutes.
Yeah, we can do a quick check and report back to council.
That's fine. It's not going to start till September anyway, so.
Yep.
Can table this issue before.
Phone it, not table.
Sorry, postpone it.
We'll just have it on our agenda next month.
Good enough.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Item E, discussion, consider request proposals for IT services. Mr. Winawiki, this was your.
Yes, so after the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, when we talked about making some modifications or approving some modifications in all of the equipment and so on, and after, you know, a lot of, I'm involved right now in helping set up a brand-new company and I'm seeing a lot of changes and a lot of different changes and practices in IT. So my proposition would be to put an RFP out there to look at outsourcing the IT services within the city. And part of that RFP would be to look at any changes that we've approved or proposed or purchases that we've approved or proposed thus far, be looked at and find out if it's really going to put us into a position where we're all, I think we're all looking for, is it putting us into a position to, to sustain ourselves for the next at least five years?
Councilwoman Colka.
Thank you. So given our budget constraints, I think that we should at least put some RFPs to see compare what we're paying for IT and what outside outsourcing would cost. I think that would be really good and to see what they have to offer for same or similar package. I think now, with regard to, you know, look, this is our like sixth Zoom meeting. It would be, it'd be interesting to see what else is out there in terms of the type of technology that, you know, is being used, you know, that is state-of-the-art and, you know, what isn't. And, you know, so we can get a better idea as to kind of, you know, where we're going and where we need to be. And I agree, you know, I want to be an up-and-coming city. I want to, you know, I want to, I want to be a city that, you know, has a lot of IT protocol. And, you know, I feel like I'm not getting that right now. And I feel like, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity out there and I'd like to see what else is out there. It doesn't mean I'm going to go there, but I'd like to see what else is out there. It's kind of like when you put your resume out on LinkedIn. We just want to get an opportunity to see what else is out there, so.
Okay. Anybody else? I guess this direction would have to go to Ms. Amy, and I see Mark's listening online. So we'll have to turn this over to Amy Sell at this point to look at maybe gathering some information on doing IT proposals for RFPs. If you can do that, Amy.
Do we need to make a motion? Oh, sorry, Mr. Lessig.
Why, a question, why, this is, an outsourced position would not be an HR function. This would be hiring a company similar to Amy Sell to provide that type of service, like an IT writer, a BPI, or dominant systems, or dynamic edge, any number of these companies that do these kinds of services, they, this would not be an IT function.
Well, I, I only said it as to Amy, as she's been put in an interim.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying the reason. Okay.
Yeah, that's why I did that.
Okay.
And, and also CC, Don Denault, kind of. Ms. Baransky?
Yeah, my question was just, do we, just, can we just give them direction to do that? Do we need a motion for that? How procedurally do we do that?
I believe at this point, we have given direction and I don't think that we should be good with that at this point.
I think Don's going to tell us.
Don? I'm going to, if I could weigh in, I've been obviously listening very carefully. I'm trying to understand the parameters of the direction. Is, probably if council is comfortable with us just exploring and bringing this to you in September to consider what the RFP scope would look like, that's fine. Then we don't need a motion. If you actually have a scope of services in mind and you want to make a motion to approve the city to publish a request for proposals, that would take a motion. I don't think we should just do that on a, on a conversation.
Yeah, the scope could be so dynamic, it's, I wouldn't even tell you where to go.
But we don't have to act on it, correct? If we put an RFP out, we don't have to.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would say, I would say right in the RFP that the city reserves the right to not award it at all if it chooses not to.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable gathering information and bringing that back and not moving forward with an RFP in the next one.
Okay, you good with that, Dave?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, you know, because again, I'd like to see what that looks like. What does that RFP look like? And, and, you know, that's something that, you know, compare what we have now, compare what we're looking for, you know, or at least our goal and our mission to keep going forward, to keep things sustained and keep things where they need to be. So I would like to see what that RFP would look like. And then from there, I think we could, we could move forward with pushing it out there, start getting the bids in to see what that looks like.
Okay, so I, Don, go ahead.
I'm reluctant to even say this, but sometimes the lawyer says things that make you think twice. We may or may not have a window of opportunity here to have this funded through COVID funds.
Oh.
And I don't know how long that window is open for, and I don't know if anybody on this, this meeting knows the answer to that. I don't, and obviously we can't predict whether that might be extended. In my head, for some reason, I have September 30th because I believe that's the end of the state's fiscal year. Or is it October 30th? I don't, I have September 30th in my head.
I think it's October for the CARES Act money from the county. Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking of, Mike. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that if this is an opportunity for us to allocate some COVID. to allocate some COVID relief funding for technological improvements. I spoke with Vicki Wolbert today from the county and just casually, the conversation was, came up that, that any kind of improvement, I mean, East Point asked her about a website improvement just to make it more user friendly for people to do appointments online versus going to City Hall because that is a safety function. And she seemed very confident that COVID relief funds can be used for something as simple or mundane, you might think, as that. Just updating your website and making it more functional and, and offering more services to residents remotely. So if this is something, Dave, that you're thinking has any value in terms of remote services, in terms of making these meetings more efficient, I know we've already approved some things for that the last month, but if it has any at all remote relationship, it may be worth exploring whether this could be funded through some of the relief funds to help our residents stay safe.
So are you saying that, 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 I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing maybe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that really then we should look at drafting the RFP and get it out there and get these bids in. So this would now come in the form of a motion to, to get this thing rolling as opposed to gathering information, coming back next month and having, losing that window of opportunity? If that's what I'm hearing, if that's what I'm hearing.
Reluctant. Yes, you are. I was reluctant to say it because it puts a lot of pressure on to try to define the parameters of what this might look like and then get it published. But it can be done and I'm sure the team could put it together. But we just kind of need, I think, I can't speak for everybody else on the team, you know, at the city, but we probably need a little more direction in terms of what is it that we're asking firms and companies to tell us they will do or could do? Because right now, even after listening to all this, I'm not real clear on what, would it just be a proposal to, to evaluate what we have now and make it better? Would it be that broad? Or would it be more limited?
Well, I think it would be more limited, but also broad in the sense that the RFP would look like, one, evaluate what we have, two, submit a recommendation as to what they feel that we need to, to improve. And three, what would their services, if we were to outsource it, you know, what would their services cost?
Okay. That seems pretty straightforward and clear to me.
I think Counselor McCullough, you were next. Go ahead.
You know what? Actually, Don kind of addressed what I was going to say because I was, I was thinking the same thing he was, so.
Okay, Counselor Lessig.
Yeah, two things. One, the CARES Act money is a reimbursement grant from the county, so we'd have to spend the money prior to it. And I do have a suggestion for a direct improvement that I believe would fit within the timeline. Our website, our website provider has an upgrade, but it would require some contracted hours with them. And we have a website upgrade of the platform is upgradable, but it would require some contracted hours with them to do that. If we could direct the IT director to reach out to Civic Plus, our website provider, and find out what it would cost for them to do the upgrade, the lift to the web design, et cetera. We could get that done within this, I think we get that done within the next couple of months. And that, from what I understand based on my macro meeting today is that the county is being pretty flexible with these things. If there is a remote, an improvement in both resident outreach, taxpayer outreach, and management administration of municipalities. So that, it would be a separate, I think there would be a separate thing we could discuss tonight, but it could actually get done in the next couple of months and that would, I think that would be a huge improvement. It's been eight years since we launched this original web or this current website and it is getting tired. Web technology has improved many, many times.
And you're right. And I think we should probably pursue that, but that's kind of separate from.
That's what I said. It's a separate issue, but it's within that narrow window that I believe this could be funded and that would be a great thing. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Director Pettis, do you have something?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but we were approved for $56,000 worth of equipment for upgrading. I think we talked about that last meeting. I got this back from the county last week. That was approved and accepted for $56,000 to upgrade the, the equipment in City Hall that will communicate with, I believe, senior housing. So that was already approved.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? So Don, you feel comfortable with a motion then to move forward on it?
Yeah.
Right. I think we're in a position that we need a motion to, to take the three points that Dave articulated, should that be the motion? And then work with that to get the RFP published.
Okay, Mr. Winawicki, you have the floor to make a motion.
I'd make a motion to draft and populate an RFP that would focus on evaluating what our current systems are and current procedures and then make a recommendation to what they would do to improve and then also submit costing.
Here we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Any other comments, questions?
Any other comments, questions?
Okay, Ms. Dolan, could you please do a? Oh, Don, go, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just a question. Do you, are you deferring to administration, Dave, for timing on this? Or do you have a window of time within which you'd like to see responses be due?
I would, I would think that by, you know, by the time this gets drafted and sent out, I would think by September 30 would be a sufficient timeframe so that we could discuss in the October meeting, the first October meeting.
I just want to make sure, we just want to make sure we spend the money in the, in the window that we have.
Right.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Anybody else? Mr. Lessig?
I do. Yes, thank you. Two questions. One is who will be, who will be the contact at the city that will be working with the, the IT vendors to tell them what we do and what systems we have, et cetera, because that's a key part of the RFP. Also, if we are, if we're doing this within the CARES Act, what are we going to be buying between now and October 31st that would be covered under this? I'm not sure. Equipment is, I saw a laptop today from New Baltimore that was covered under this CARES Act money. But it's specific things. It's not, they won't be paying for our IT outsourcing. They would be paying for a piece of equipment or a software upgrade or, or some hours of contracted services.
So to answer your two questions, one, the assumption would be made that anybody who's coming in to look at our systems and to evaluate what we've got, the assumption would be that they would work with the current IT director to point out, and I believe there's, there's someone also on public safety that's been working with IT equipment. So those, we would, the expectation would be they would avail themselves to someone coming in to evaluate and look at and make a recommendation moving forward to what we've got. And as far as working with, working within the CARES Act, we may qualify, we may not. That wasn't, that wasn't part of the primary focus, but it is, it's like a bonus if we could get something out of the CARES Act, that's great. But we need to look forward at our current infrastructure to see what we have, where we need to be. And if we can get some CARES Act money, that's a bonus to me.
Okay. Everybody sat. Okay, looks good. Ms. Dolan, could you please do a?
Do we go out to the citizens anymore?
I was going to go out to agenda items after the section.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Member Bransky.
Yes.
Member Blankey.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Culka.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
No.
Member Shornak. Member Winawicki.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. At this time, I've been asked for, people need a five minute break. Can we take a five minute break and come back to at 9:50, please?
8:50.
8:50. 8:50. Yeah. Thank you. Last test?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Patrice did pull up the notes, met us, she showed me on the Board of Commissions, we were approved for 18 meetings for this year.
This year?
Yep.
So I think we'd have to speak to that commission.
So just wanted, just wanted to give you that note.
Yeah, no, I think Councilmember Lessig was right. Legally, we have to see if they have that authority.
Yeah.
They can offset compensation.
Yeah, we'll look into it, just to give you that update, that's all.
Don had something to add, I think. He looked like he was jumping.
My guess, just a short guess, would be, they, and this is starting to sound familiar, I think, we may even look at this, it's, they can set your compensation per meeting, and they can set it at a certain number of meetings, because that's your total compensation, right? But if you met and weren't paid for meeting, that would just fall under your general city council duties. So I'm guessing now, I'll look into it, but I'm guessing now, it is probably okay for you to meet more. You just wouldn't get the extra per meeting, per diem thing, that they've approved, if you've got the nineteen meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item F, approval to, yes, go ahead.
Before we talked on the IT issue, I had that second idea regarding the website upgrade. Could we discuss that a little bit? If, I would just go so far as to make a motion to direct the IT director to contact Civic Plus, our website host, and inquire cost of an upgrade to their new platform and contracted services to do the upgrade. Basically handing that off to them.
Sure, no, that's, I don't have a problem with that.
I second that motion.
Yep.
And then, okay, thank you, and, Mr.
Mr. Pettis, Mike?
Am I unheeded?
Yes, you're good.
Would, would you want me to, do you want us to submit that to the county cares funding? Because there is a process, and I do, it is September, October, I have the date here. With that, we're submitting requests, and the counties have proven it. Do you want that as part of that?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And I would also, I would also amend my motion to inquire as to whether it could be completed prior to the, is it October thirty-first is the end, last submission date, Mike?
I believe so. I can look it up right here, but I do know, they don't, you don't have to have it cut, the completion date isn't as important, if you're working on it or they're doing it. I don't, I think that is not as important as the submittal to get it approved.
Okay, as long as we're, we've engaged the, we've moved forward on the contract, we've committed to it. The work doesn't necessarily have to be completed, but we are committing to it, is that essentially what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, that's, yep, I wish, that's correct.
All right, and I don't know, I don't think I need to amend my motion, I would just leave it as, as direct, the IT director to contact Civic Plus, our website provider, and inquire about a upgrade to their new platform and contracted services to bring our, to upgrade our city website to modern times.
Good, no, good idea, Mike. Thank you. So we have a motion, and we do have a second, any other comments on the motion? Bring him back for a quick vote.
Hey, Member Branowski?
Yes.
Member Blankey? Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
Member Winawiki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item F, the approval to hire two additional public safety officers to replace anticipated retirements. Interim Director Pettis, you have the floor.
Yeah, this is, again, follows our succession planning that we have in place. I have a, we currently are staffed at twenty-nine public safety officers, which is what we're budgeted for, but I only have twenty-seven which are in service, which means they're solo patrol. I have one that's on active military leave for about another year, and I have one that starts the academy in September fifteenth, so he won't be ready to go on his own until mid-November. I have three anticipated retirements. One coming up in late October, one coming as soon as possibly early September, kind of an unanticipated retirement, and I have one in March. So I already have the approval for one, I'm looking for two additional for the retirement in September and the anticipated in March. The one in March, I don't think I would hire that person immediately, because it is a March, and I don't want to get into the specifics, but the two would be immediate, the third would, I could possibly hold off a month or two, depending on circumstances, who, on that individual. So I am looking for approval to hire two for anticipating these retirements, keeping our number at twenty-nine.
Okay. Any comments, questions from council? Councilwoman Shornak?
Um, several questions and comments, actually. One, I am definitely a proponent of being proactive in hiring, but the problem I have with this is, we haven't gotten any updates in a really long time. And what I mean by that is, so, I have to hear through the rumor mill all the time that people have been retired. And honestly, as a councilperson, and just a resident of the city pretty much my whole life, I'm actually kind of irritated by it, and it's, and it seems to be a thing with everybody. So we get requests to replace people, but no one bothers to tell us who we're replacing. So for instance, I think council should have had the opportunity to wish Mr. Branowski, Lisa Pettis, and Pat, and thank them for their services to the community. I mean, a pack group around the street, my kids love Lisa, she was in everything my kids did through going through the school, and Mr. Branowski, they knew him as well, and as a citizen, not just council, we haven't even got an opportunity, first off, we got no notice of it until people come asking for new people, which, again, is putting, we're always reactive. What happened to being proactive? Proactive means, hey, by the way, this person retired, we're gonna need to replace them, I'm gonna be coming to you maybe next month or the month after to say, hey, I need a replacement. So that's number one, my biggest, one of my biggest issues, because I personally want to thank, and anybody else can do what they want, but I personally want to thank those three individuals for their time served, and all the things they did do for our community. I saw it firsthand, I'm sure others have as well. So for me, thank you. Secondarily, what happened to the two new hires? Because I know the one that you hired, you said would be able to start with us in October. Is that the guy you're saying now is postponed for another year because he's active military?
I'm not, I'm not sure who you're referring to. We had a military hired that got delayed because his required training through the US military conflicted with the fire academy. So he wasn't able to go to the fire academy. That may, that may be who you're referring to.
So, but has he started just here, other than the fire academy? Because I know he can't go by himself right now, but is he actually currently working for us?
Yes, well, currently, he's on a two-week training through the military. He comes back, but yes, he's done, I believe he's done with his field training, he just needs his fire academy.
Okay, and I know that's, that's nobody's fault, because this whole COVID is screwed up, all that stuff, I got that. So I'm just wondering, okay, so who's the, who, is it already one of our officers who's been one of our officers for a really long time? Who's also active military, who's going to be deployed for over a year?
It's Officer Salamone, I believe he's been here a year or two.
Okay, so he's been here.
He's gone, yes.
Okay, that was my question. So, I mean, obviously, you can't tell us necessarily who's going to be retiring, I get that, because it's always a crap sheet. But it would be helpful to know this stuff in advance, because this is what holds up the process, at least in my opinion, this holds up the process, because we don't know, and then, all of a sudden, you come and like, I need, you know, and not just you, department heads come, I need a replacement, I need a replacement, but no one tells us. And I have to hear through everybody else that these people have retired, which is kind of, I'm gonna say offensive, honestly, for my personal, that's my personal take on it, because we should know what's going on, we should know people are coming and going. We didn't know when we left, no one told us that. So I would think it will behoove all the department heads to say, hey, once you do know somebody's retiring, send, send a quick email in your weekly, your monthly report.
Forever you want. I don't know if you, you haven't gotten it, I don't have retirement papers on any of these individuals.
No, no, I know that, I'm talking about the people who just retired.
I would, that was, all of those people that you mentioned was in my report, that I forward to the city manager. I forward all that information. When people retire, in my report several times. I, my direct communication with
Office?
Is there somebody else on here?
It sounds like a resident. Residents, if you could mute your mics.
These are all in my reports. None of these retirements that I'm talking about, I don't have any paperwork from them. When I get that, when I get a letter that this is the date, I put that in my report, and I forward that. I don't have that from any of these, these are word of mouth as well, that's how I operate. I don't get anything, if, once I get something official, it's always in my Friday report. So.
Again, I'm not talking about the ones coming up, I know you can't do anything about those until you have the paperwork, I get that.
The ones that you specifically mentioned were absolutely, I forward that information on. Their retirement, or their last day, or their ceremony, that, that's not, no, I don't forward that.
Oh, no, that's tweets to their person.
Yeah, but every one of those people that you mentioned was in my report announcing their retirement. So my communication is through the city managers, I don't have direct contact with you guys, so I can answer for that. But absolutely, I do that, on all of, all retirements.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
It has nothing to do with the motion or anything, but we can finally see Mr. Thompson. So you have your, and you do look rather dapper in the suit and tie, so thank you. You got your technology fixed.
Councilwoman Branowski?
I think we just uncovered a huge problem, interim Director Pettis, so that you know, we've never been forwarded that information from your report. We get piecemeal, or we got piecemeal, random sentences from what is probably a more inclusive report, and that probably is where the breakdown in communication came from. And fortunately, Mark Thompson already identified the issue, can remedy that by just forwarding us your entire report. I don't know why that wasn't done. The only question I have for you is, so you were approved to hire two last November, well, last November, you were approved to hire one, we remedied it in December and got you the second one. Have we hired both of those? And if not, why not? So that, therefore, that would have covered Officer Branowski and Officer Pettis' anticipated retirement, so that those two should now be up and running. I, the one is in the military, and that's a separate issue. And not counting Salamone, but what about that other opening that's already?
We're at twenty-nine right now, so we're where, we hired all of those. I have one that I, Officer Campion is the one that you approved for, in, I believe, the March meeting. Because that one I knew was, was pretty solid. These other ones are not, and even, I mean, Renee's probably about as, as concrete as there is, but a lot of people move on to different jobs, and if they don't get that job, then they're not, so it's, it's not as, you know, I don't get the best, I don't always get the best communication either, because they don't know, they don't want to commit to it. Some people are, commit to it a lot harder than others. But again, the Officer McLaughlin, that one just snuck up on me. He didn't really have, I don't want to get into that, but that, that one was not truly anticipated. He was eligible, but I've talked to Gary numerous times, and circumstances change with him. So he may be leaving, but I don't know that for sure. That's why I would hire one or two if I could, right now, that third one, because if Gary doesn't leave, I have another one behind that, that is pretty solid. So like I said, I've told you, it's, you never really know, and I don't like to pull the trigger until I am very confident that that person's gonna leave. And I get good communications, but again, circumstances change for people, so you have to, you know, wager bets a little bit.
Well, the second question I have is, and we haven't gotten any updates, and it might not be your fault. Have you given any updates about overtime and kind of where we're at with staffing over the la, while we've been short, because although we have, you said we have twenty-nine, but one's doing field training and one's gone. So how are we with overtime operating with twenty-seven sworn independent officers?
Um, we're, we've made some changes, and again, I can, you know, it was gonna be one of my questions for you tonight, since we don't really have a manager, I can give some updates to you, and just want to know who you want me to funnel that through, if you want me to send that to you individually or through the mayor, however you want to do that. My weekly reports that I do, obviously, those could be forwarded on, or I can do it directly to you. But I have that information, I keep track of all that, I can give you an update of where we stand as a year-to-year, on a year-to-year basis compared to last year.
So you don't know it right now? Like, are we up, are we down, are we way over?
We're, we are definitely down from last year.
Oh, awesome.
Time, costs have gone down. And again, we will be hopefully receiving some monies for some of this COVID overtime or some COVID payroll that we've, we've applied for essentially two months of all payroll through the CARES Act, almost half a million dollars worth of funding to pay for salaries during that time. And then there's gonna be another window open here for June and July as well, for COVID funding, payroll reimbursement through that. I talked to John Walters about that, I believe, yesterday. When that opens up, we'll be putting in for that as well.
So what do you attribute the reduction in overtime to, even though we're down two officers?
The, mostly the switch that I made, putting a EMT, public safety officer in the fire hall. That really helped, scheduling helped with overtime. Putting one person up there helped out with that.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody, Councilwoman Colka?
Thank you. Thank you, Director. You know, my biggest issue with this is that, I think we need more information, and it sounds like you've given it, however, what we're getting may not be what you're giving, right? So that is our frustration here. For me, it would have been really good to say, hey, you know, you gave, we got, I got, I got the authority to hire these two people, we hired them as of blah, 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 they started on blah, 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 they're gonna do fire academy, blah, 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 they're gonna do this, they're gonna, so we have a timer, who knows? Now, when you come, and I, and I understand the residents may be frustrated by this, but here's the deal, we don't have money to just piss into the wind, no offense, but we don't. And everybody has to come to the table and be accountable, and that's the deal here, that's, that's the deal. So I just want to make sure when we ask these questions that we're getting the information, because I want to make sure that we're being transparent, that it's no
Referring to pissing into the wind, the monies, what are you referring to?
Well, because we're not in the loop.
What don't, what don't you know?
Hold on, you come to us and you ask us for, to hire people, but we don't even know the status of what's going on. That's the problem we have, whether it be that you sent it to Wayne, or you sent it to, I don't know who, but we don't know. I don't know. Obviously, you know, Councilmember Patrice, Shornak doesn't know, we don't know. So all we want to do is have information, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, Director, I'm really not. All I want is information. So when you come to us and you say, hey, we need to hire two or three more people, we're good to go, I know what's happened in the last year. I don't have to hear it through Facebook, my daughters were devastated to find out, they would have loved to know about, about Lisa retiring, that's a big deal to them, she's a huge part of this community, she's been here for so long. She's been here for so long. And that's not even the issue here. It's the issue of just being, having communication. Just having, this is simple communication.
I, I just got to tell you though, and I, I came to you telling you, when I, those last officers were for Lisa Pettis. These three are for Officer Campion, Officer McLaughlin, and Sergeant Ashley. I told you this at the meeting, that these hires were specifically for Lisa Pettis.
Not, not before today. Not before right just this minute.
Yeah, I, yes, it was. I told you.
Because I'm, I'm an intelligent person and I would have read that before today, and I would have had a very good understanding of the amount of people that needed to be hired, who's retiring. And I don't need to know names unless, you know, I either know them or they, you know, they're, I mean, obviously, anybody who's retiring that has commu, that has provided a service to this community and they've retired because they've been here 25 years, yes, it would be, um, they, they deserve accolades from, from City Council, because this isn't an easy job. Your job is not easy. Every day, every single one of our PSOs that put their lives on the line every single day. Their jobs are not easy. So yes, they deserve accolades. They deserve to be, uh, at least to have some sort of announcement if they choose that that's what's going on. But when you hired the people that you hired to fill the people that you asked for last November and in March, it would have been nice to just see that timeline so that we understand what's going on here. And I'm not saying that I'm not going to approve this. I'm just saying that it's part of the process here of transparency. Is it, Mr. Galaxy A10S? You should probably put it on mute, because I can hear you swearing, and I don't think the rest of the residents appreciate that. If you have something to say during, during, uh, citizen participation, I suggest you stay here.
I'm muted, so.
My whole thing here is I just want to have more communication and more transparency so that we can show the residents that we're doing our due diligence. I, I don't have any problem giving you the officers that you need for sure, but I just, we want to see that, that process. We deserve to see that process. We're much a part of this community as you are.
But it's the succession planning that we've talked about. Every time I have to come with approval when somebody is anticipating their retirement, or I am anticipating their retirement, I come to you and I ask for that replacement. These people aren't leaving for October, March of 2021. Officer McLaughlin was, uh, a, a quick one, but I believe I use the officer's name, that this is who I'm replacing. I think I say, I have an anticipated, uh, retirement. Maybe, if you want their names, I can give them to you. But I put this in the report that when, when people are leaving and retiring, I write this to-
That's not my, that's not my issue per se, okay? My, my issue per se is, when you hire people, just say so, hey, we filled that position. Hey, we filled that position. Hey, we're, and you, maybe you gave it to Wayne. I, I don't know. I'm just saying, maybe you told Wayne. Maybe you've done your due diligence and we're not getting the information from that perspective. I, I can't, I can't say what you've given to Wayne. All I can get, all I can see is what I've gotten from our city manager, okay? So I'm just saying that if you, in, in good faith, if you filled those positions and you sent in your weekly reports that you definitely, hey, we hired this person, here's their schedule, this is what they're going to do, A, B, C, and D, awesome. Good to go. And maybe he thought that was information he and the council don't need, so that we're on the same page. So when you go, hey, I need to hire two more people, we go, we know, because we saw you hired this person, you hired, and not their names, but we hired, you hired, uh, Officer A and you hired Officer B and you hired them then, and they're going to start, you know, on this date, and they're going to do this on this date, so we know. I don't have any problem going back and looking at stuff, but I feel like I'm being left in the dark. I don't know what's going on, and it's, you know, and I, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure that out. So I want to give you the benefit of the doubt, because I know your job is not easy. It's very, very difficult. I, I get that. But just help me, help you, help get what you need. That's it. And I know you and I have been at this before. I, just help me, help you get what you need. That's it.
If you guys told me what you want, and even my Friday reports that I put out, if you gave me, there's obviously information, I, I don't, can't give out everything, but if you told me what you want, that would help me out. I, you're, you're telling me, I'm not telling you these things. I'm telling you that when I come for approval and you say, hey, go ahead and hire, I go ahead and hire, and I move on in the training process. And if you want to know who's leaving and who's coming, I need to know that.
Well, if you're asking us to approve people to hire, we need to know that information. That, to me, would be very, very straightforward. It would be very straightforward that if you want us to approve you hiring people, which I want to be able to do, I really do, because, you know, I love this city. I mean, and, and I know you're doing a good job. I know you are, but I need to know these things so that I can help you. That's it.
I thought part of the succession plan that we agreed to, I had to come to you, I had to tell you, this person is retiring and I want to hire in anticipation. I thought I was doing that. I thought that's what I'm doing tonight.
Fair. That's fair. Going forward, that's fair. That's fair. But when you do hire those people, please let us know so that we know that that's been fulfilled. So we have an idea so we can report back. That's awesome, that yes, I hired these people, we're up at 29 officers again. A, B, and C are going to retire. You don't have to give me names. A, B, and C is fine. I don't care whether they're anticipated to retire. I need, you know, I need A and B. I'm not too sure about C right now. But you know, because I sent you these reports way back when, that A, B, A and B retired, A, A, A and B from last, the last session when I got approved, those retired, and I, I filled those up. So we know, we have an idea so that it, it's just, it's a credibility issue in terms of you coming forward, showing us what you want, what you need, and so that it helps us understand where you're coming from, what you've done. You know, and yes, I do think, in, in terms of just kind of deviating from the issue here, I do think it would be great if we did know some of the, the officers that have been here 25 years. I mean, they're part of our lives. I mean, they're, they're very important to us. And, you know, I, maybe they want to be, maybe I want to honor them at, you know, at, at a city council meeting. There's some of them. I really would love to. They've done an amazing job. I'm going to cry, see? Anyway, that's all I have to say.
I, I can tell you, and again, I don't want to, I, I, I know it's important to me too, to share that. I share that. I've, I've known, I, I can't remember other than the last two, that, that was in my report several times. May, and it's just, it's her last day this day. It's his person's last day. I, I share that, but I don't have direct communication. That, that's, that's the process that's in place. And I'm not, again, I'm not trying to pass the buck or throw anybody in the bus, but I know I communicate these things. When people retire, it's important. I put it in the updates to my officers, so they know that this, it's this person's last day, because you may work a different shift, and, and I don't just do it once. It's, you know, when I get, when I get paper saying, this is my last day, I put that out there. And then I put one out maybe a week or two before to reiterate that. But again, some retirements come like that. Hey, I'm, I'm, there's my two-week notice. I got another job. So I, you know, that's not always the case.
I, I understand that, but it would be helpful if we had a timeline that just showed, here we asked for this. This was filled. This is the timeline we have for the Fire Academy and, and all the other, all the other training they have to go through. We anticipate they'll be on the road at this point. And you have done that in the past sporadically. I have seen that, for sure. I've seen that. But it is not consistent, and that's all I'm saying. So that way, when we come to these meetings and you're asking for two or three officers, maybe, like I said, A, B, not, maybe not C, not sure, not whatever, we're like, we can, we're more apt to rubber stamp that, but we want to make sure that we're, we're going through all these processes, Director, because I feel like it's important for the people to understand where we're coming from so that we're not just rubber stamping stuff. And, and I, look, I have the utmost respect for you and your department, and I want to be able to just rubber stamp stuff. I do. But it's a different time. Unfortunately, it's, it's, that's out of my control. It's a different time. And I hope you can respect that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Next.
Okay, well, at, at this time, I'll go ahead and, uh, go ahead.
Um, I would just like to say before we, well, if we do, as a council, approve this, I would like to, um, keep it consistent through all departments. And interim Director Pettis, I would like to work with Amy Sal as well, as far as getting your candidate pool and stuff like that. And, um, because I know we want to make all the hiring processes throughout the city the same. So what's, you know, we're have, we had, we had Nick working on that, so I think every department should be the same. We want to be fair and consistent across the board. That's my only request. Thank you.
I don't, what, what was the request?
To work with Amy Sal.
And we, we've talked about this, and I look forward to supporting his needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve the hire two additional public safety offers to replace anticipated retirements in the future.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on that motion? I see none. I'll bring it back to Ms. Dolan for a vote.
Number Varansky.
Yes.
Number Blanky. Number Carnegie.
Yes.
Number Culka.
Yes.
Number Lessig.
Yes.
Number Shornak.
Yes.
Number Winawicki.
Yes.
Good motion carries. Thank you. Item G, extending the state of emergency through September 10th, 2020. Uh, I just wanted to add this on the agenda again. I was on a conference call this week with the state and went with the county, and it's actually picked up a little bit in Macomb County, so I think it's in our best position again to extend this. The state of Michigan runs out September 4th, but listening to her, it sounds like she's definitely going to be, uh, adding time onto her expiration date also. So I think it's best interest in our city to extend ours, at least to the summer 10th meeting. So I will make that as a motion.
Second.
So we have motion and comments and questions. I see none. I'll bring it back for a vote. Ms. Dolan.
Hey, number Varansky.
Yes.
Number Blanky. Number Carnegie.
Yes.
Number Culka.
Yes.
Number Lessig.
Yes.
Number Shornak.
Yes.
Number Winawicki.
Yes.
Good motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item 9A, status update of Hidden Pines Senior Apartments Management Company slash RFP slash Mark Z. I don't know if there's anyone here who really can talk about that, but, uh, maybe Nick, you can help us out with that. I think Wayne sent out his last notes based on questions that council had, and I had a visit with Wayne and updated council on my notes. But it's still sounds like there is no contract, and there's still seems to be confusion between, uh, the wants and needs of Mark Z and what the city's looking for.
Yeah, at this point, it's kind of still sitting idle. The last we seen come over was just, uh, pretty much their, uh, itemized list as far as their cost of materials or things replaced in the building if they were to work on the building. That's the last I've really seen come across.
And with that list, I said Donald Wayne, uh, expressed that he was going to put that list together and give it to you, and we're going to compare what it costs RDBW to do compared to what he would be charging the city to do. Do you know if that ever did get, uh, be looked at?
I did see the list. I don't have it. Um, I'm sure I can get it from Kelly to do a cost comparison with that list.
Okay.
It pretty well, it pretty much was a basic list as far as a toilet light fix for that third thing countertop, so.
But I, it sounded like there was a minimum char, I mean, he's charging a pipe per 15 minutes now.
Minutes, which seemed just-
And it seemed to be, it could be outrageous for some other things that they would do, so.
It was like a $20 charge for 15 minutes, for every 15 minutes, which would take you 15 minutes to park your car and get up to a unit. So that, that really, that really didn't make a lot of sense, so.
Yeah. Yeah. So at this point, Council, I really think there's a, a disconnect between, uh, what's going on and what we're looking for, what you're looking for and that. But, uh, Councilwoman Varansky, go ahead.
With all due respect, we as council haven't been seeing anything, so I don't-
I know.
I don't want to, I don't want to disparage Mark Z. We voted to enter into contract negotiations with, based, and then nothing has happened since that vote in March or February. We have seen nothing. So I don't want to make, um, broad assumptions that, a, and remember that he was very, very open to being willing to negotiate every term of the contract. And, and, and giving us every single thing we asked for, from out in 30 days to whatever flexibility to, to prove that he could do the job. So I, I, I just want to, you know, be careful, you know, the ball was dropped 100% and it may have been mutual. It may have been COVID-related, but I certainly don't want to abandon it based on some random itemization that may or may not reflect the binding terms. I guess what I would ask Don, have you had any, and then obviously it's going to now transfer over to Amy Sal, have you had any communication, and then eventually, and then eventually, have you had any communication with Mark Z? And all I would just ask is that it get picked back up so that we can make a final determination.
Yeah, I was just reporting out, well, he finds Amy, it was, had nothing to do with either or, but the discrepancy or dropping the ball was probably mutual on both sides as far as COVID and everything else. But, go ahead, Amy.
Me.
Amy Sal.
I, I will attempt to find the balls and gather them up and start putting together a report and try to get that back out to everybody. So I'll be following up with, with Nick and Don and anyone else and try to scoop them all up.
And I'll get that cross-list together also.
Councilwoman Culka was next.
Um, I just wanted to find out if we got any feedback from Mark regarding whether he's still interested in this project. I get that COVID is an issue, but, you know, I tried to call him myself and I never got a response. So I don't know if they're, they're firm. I mean, I get that COVID is an issue, but as the, as the guy, I would expect him to call and say, hey, we got some issues going on. And I, I think we kind of saw that in the, in the, uh, report we got from, uh, Mr. O'Neill, but I just, you know, has anybody talked to him like recently?
I, I tried also and I couldn't, but then I thought I was just reaching above my authority to talk, so I wanted to leave it in the hands of the people who were doing it, and I just wanted to get a status report for council. And I didn't, wasn't able to get that before this meeting, so. Uh, Councilwoman Blanky. Is your mute, please?
Thanks, Patrice. Uh, speaking of status, Nick, is any, are, are you getting ready for this project? Or what is, what is the status of it at the, at the housing?
Can you speak into the balconies and doors?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I kind of figured so. Um, we're getting ready to schedule a pre-construction meeting, hopefully next week.
Okay, just so the residents, uh, you know, are aware that something, we are moving forward. But I, I, I have an issue. It's somewhat related. Uh, I went over to the senior center during the week. Have you been in the back of the senior center lately?
The seniors, inside or outside?
I'm sorry, the housing. In back of the housing, outside.
Yeah.
Have you fallen into a pothole? Have you seen the potholes?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm going to ask the mayor, and I'm going to make the note of it with the council and say this publicly. I feel that's a severe, severe safety issue with people that are 90 years old there. And, and I only know that area because my mom lived there. I, I wouldn't want anybody's mom to live there right now, or father with those potholes. I think we have hot patch. I've heard of that.
They've been-
Put hot patch, you're not-
Yes, they've, they've been patched.
Since when?
Yesterday.
Since yesterday? What a coincidence. Yeah, because I was there actually Monday. I'm glad to hear that. So are you, are you going- are you going to tell us that you're secure with that outcome then, right? That it's safe? As it can be?
This time, yes.
Pardon?
At this time, yes.
Okay. And thank you. I appreciate that it was done. And keep an eye on it, please. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to item B, update on city capital, city parks capital improvements. Nick, I see you're here and Sherri Stein's here. If someone would like to give council an update?
Yes, um, so I'm going to be meeting with Alex next week, Monday to be going over Blanky Park, I'm sorry, Somerset and Pompo Park as far as getting the timeline and the pre-construction meetings ready to go. At that point, we'll update everybody as, as far as when we'll be starting. Right now, it's tentative to September 17th, I believe. Um, as far as when we'll be starting the parks. At that point, they, they believe it's about a two week, two to three week process. With the pathways, everything considered, it's probably a more pilot, four or five weeks, it's probably be done.
Both parks, five weeks?
Yeah, with the parks and everything. With the pathways. So looking probably mid-October.
Are the parks playgrounds still officially closed?
No.
No, okay. Any other comments, questions from council? Ms. Shornak.
Uh, yes, I'm very glad you brought an update on parks. Um, because we're there a lot in, yeah, that'll be really great, especially Somerset because it's really desolate. And, um, oh, I wanted to compliment you on the, um, the tennis courts. This is the first time I've actually seen them since they've been done. They look awesome. And I don't play tennis. So for all those who play tennis, that's awesome. Um, so, but, um, as far as the parks be, they're not, so they're not going to get started until October?
No, September. By looking, second week in September, 17th, actually, they're looking to, to start them, which is a Thursday.
Okay.
Probably more optimistic, you know, when somebody says a start date like that, it's probably more gets pushed and pushed and whether, so I'm guessing probably that following Monday, which pushes almost to the end of September. They're saying two weeks. And we're optimistic again, probably more three weeks. And then with the pathways having to be coordinated in with that, I would probably think more four to five weeks from start to finish both parks.
Okay. And you guys are still taking out the old equipment, right? Just for cost savings? You guys are still able to do that? Okay, cool.
Once I meet with, next Monday, we kind of introduce ourselves and kind of get a game plan together. And when we're going to get in there, when he's going to get in there to really timeline and coordinate as far as us starting and then coming in. That way the parks are, aren't shut down, minimize the shutdown, actually.
Yeah. So my other question is, I know we're trying to limit the amount of people in groups. But I noticed, because my granddaughter seems to think it's a big sandbox. And by the way, she's a good helper because every time we go there, she pulls the weeds out of the volleyball area because it's a thing for her. I don't know what it's about. But anyway, probably because she always helps me in my garden. But the, the volleyball net's not up. And I know that you don't want big crowds or anything, but at Somerset, honestly, you usually have like four or five kids at a time wanting to play volleyball. And I know there was kids there looking for a volleyball net. So I mean, I know summer is, you know, almost over, but I mean, could we at least until the construction starts, put up the volleyball net there? I mean, it's, okay. I, I mean, I know, you know, we're trying to be safe and everything, but these kids need to get outside and do something. And again, they're not big groups, so they're usually.
Well, that's where the volleyball, the tennis, so but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly. So that would be great if you guys could manage to do that. I'd appreciate it. And not that this has anything to do with that in particular, but just very quickly. And I don't know if it's actually your, for you to do, but, um, so riding around, because I got a bike trailer and that's been our fun, riding around the city. Um, up and down Kelly, especially going towards 13 mile. You could be a very small person and I'm not that tall. And I don't even have to be on a bike and you get hit in the face by trees. You have to duck out of the way of trees. And the same thing going down Masonic to Dairy Maid. Especially, I'll say on the right hand side. The trees are overgrown onto the sidewalk where, I mean, somebody who is like five eights is going to get smacked in the face. Just walk it. So can we just make sure, um, I don't know, I don't know, is that you or is that building department that somebody just tells them to, hey, please trim your trees? Because who, who takes care of that? Is it your guys or is that the building?
It's our department.
Okay. So if you guys would please, because I, I literally had to go into the street and I, I know there is a bike path, but I don't want to take a baby in the street. It's myself, it's one thing, but I, I don't feel comfortable. I don't trust people. So I would prefer if we could please, um, just, you know, ask those businesses to please make it appropriate for, for all who want to walk and or ride their bikes on the sidewalk. I'd appreciate that. Thanks, Nick.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Nick on the parks? Councilwoman Baranski.
Yeah, Nick, I would just ask that once you have that plan of the, um, you know, the timeline, that you publish it and get it up on the city website, get it on Facebook so that it can get out for two reasons. One, so that people know. And also so that then people will be drawn back to the parks. They'll know that something's coming and then see it. Because it is a big deal and it's going to be, so the more we advertise it, warning people that when it's going to happen, but also notifying them the better, I think. So that's all I would ask.
That's why I kind of kept on my update report that my dates were kind of vague for the fact that they weren't there yet until I walked through with Alex and didn't really get a game plan with him as soon as we meet.
Councilwoman Calca.
Thank you. So Nick, I just want to tell you that the last few updates that you've given us really have been amazing. They've been spot on. They have been amazing. And they have told us what we need in short words, few information, like the, it's, it's amazing. You're listening to what we want. And I appreciate that tremendously. So I want to tell you that I appreciate you listening to what we're asking, putting it in a short and concise manner and making it easy to understand. It's, love it. That's exactly what I'm looking for, at least for me. That's exactly what I'm looking for. And when, when I see it, I'm going to tell you. Because I think it's what you did with, what you did with the, um, uh, the Fruhoff and the Fruhoff updates and with the water main update and also with the parks. I just want you to know it was amazing. So thank you.
And I appreciate the response and the questions too.
Well, actually, that's why I put some of these things on the agenda so we can get those updates. But you, you did such a good one on Fruhoff and resurfacing and that you just needed now maybe give it for the residents because we do have the update. But if you want to just give a quick update so the residents can understand. I did have a couple of calls, as you know, with some of the residents with some of the dirt and dust issues. But I believe you, you and Mike Vigram were addressing that and, and looking at that and.
I talked to him, I talked to the resident, uh, quite lengthy yesterday and.
Good.
Explain to him, we're, we're doing what we can as we.
Yeah.
We can keep control. I told him this is pretty much the, the mud sanding of building a house right now. He's in that, uh, he's in that dusty stage, so.
Well, they're getting, they're getting a brand new road, so there's going to be a little bit of dirt involved. I tried to tell him. So there's a little bit of dirt involved, so.
We're going to try and control it as much as possible. Mother nature not helping me.
Yeah, so.
If I could just add though, that if we can just make sure, like in terms of getting that out to the residents, as much social media as we can, use the roly poly, use our webs, our, our Facebook page, website, whatever we can to just give them that same kind of thing, that's perfect. And, and I even would agree to put that out for the, for the park improvements. Tell them what's coming. Tell them what we're doing. Because they, they get excited. They want to know. And, and obviously, you know, I think, I, I think it's, that's a great start. I think putting it out there for social media is, is, would be, you know, trying to get it out there to tell the residents. I, I know we don't have the resources to send letters. That would be my next thing, but I get it. But any place that we can to get people to, you know, be involved and be, you know, to, to have knowledge of what's going on in the city would be amazing. So I, I commend you for taking those steps. So thank you.
Many notices that we can as soon as we know, especially for the park.
Again, it's all about good communication. I think I had three calls on it. I returned them all right away and they were shocked in the first place that we even returned their call. And then they were doubly shocked when someone showed up the door to talk about it. So those is the type of responses that they're getting from, you know, myself, other council people and you guys. That's what we need to continue to do. I mean, when you hear somebody yell across the phone, it's the mayor on the phone. I can't believe it. You, you know that you're responding to what they want. So it's a good thing, so.
Even with what we did with Fruhoff, and I apologize, I know the, the timeline of the invite of getting people to come to the library. We were running against the construction meeting and the holiday coming up. But I got to tell you, we brought everybody in and the COVID and, you know, social distancing, obviously, we couldn't bring every street in that area. But we brought in every resident on Fruhoff and we got a great response and, and put on a great meeting that night. So, but.
That's good. Okay, is there anything else you want to add to the water main? Everything is all set, going, moving along.
It's going really well. And we're on Utica Road heading south of Masonic, getting the main in. And Utica Road was the one that I was most worried about. 14 miles, it was actually ended up being the challenge road. Um, so Utica Road, knock on wood, it's going well. We still got to go into the tracks. We're going under the tracks Monday, Tuesday. So that's, uh, that's going to be huge. So once we get under the tracks, we'll be smooth sailing to 13 mile, but it's going well. Sunday afternoon around two o'clock, we'll be tying for sea onto our 12 inch main on 14 mile. So that's going to be, that's going to be a big accomplishment. They're excited. We're excited and help their fire flow and it's, uh, it's going well.
Councilwoman Shornak.
You're muted.
Yes, no, I know. Um, I just have one other question about the 14 mile infrastructure repair. I'm sure the answer is just to this, but I just want to double check. I know that they have put the hot patch over the holes. Um, but they are planning on re-cementing that, correct?
Yes, yep. Marked out all those areas. And I know you had that email of questions and concerns as far as that and. But yeah, we'll be, uh, that'll be getting fixed also.
Good dog. But yeah, this is what you do at home, right? That's why I elected to come here because my grandchild will not leave me alone. She must have, she wants to talk to her friends on, on, uh, on that screen too. But yeah, because I just want to make sure that, um, we are replacing that with cement because those holes will end up with the, yeah, with the hot patch, it will end up sinking and it's not worth it.
Yeah. Concrete in and some topsoil and moving on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, item D. Discussing, talking to public safety about some shift changes. Amy, do we still need to talk about that or is that?
Um, oh, yeah, I think, I mean, the whole purpose of putting it on the agenda was really just to give an update as to our committee.
Okay.
And so it really should have been labeled update on our committee actions.
Right. I told them that, but it, it's okay.
No, 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 I know. Because I've had inquiry from, and I'm sure that everyone has, from both residents, employees and also fellow council members asking, you know, what's the status? Where are we at? What, what have we discovered? I think that, you know, clearly, if anyone looked at the packet, we're nowhere close to being ready to vote on this. That isn't what this was about today. I don't know where that came from. That's silly. Um, but it's important that there's full transparency in everything we're doing and why we're doing it. Not to beat a dead horse, but we don't got enough money to pay our bills. We had to tax the residents and we're trying to find in every avenue ways to do things differently. Last September, even before I was on council, this council actually, in response to, ironically, the succession plan, I think it was, the memo that interim director Pettis put out, he ran the cost for what it was costing in overtime when we run fives. It was like $5,000. And when we run fours, it was $17,000 in overtime just to fill without emergencies, without fires, without catastrophes. And so council had asked for some conversation and some information. And that morphed into, um, a request specifically for a presentation that would address the actual costs and, and what it would look like if we did a 12s or a 24s. And that was presented in March. Listening to that presentation, um, and, and, and taking a informal, uh, opinion poll of the PSOs. 24s seem to be the more preferable, um, route to consider. Unfortunately, we didn't get the kind of information that we wanted as a council in terms of costs and on the financial end of it. So we, as a council, formed a subcommittee to try to gather that information. And that's where my role, the mayor's role and Councilwoman Calca, um, started the process. We, um, got information from other cities. We've, I've spoken with different, um, administrations, different places, different people who actually work in 24s, trying to gather the pros and the cons and the costs. And, um, we thought we were at a point that we could actually, or I shouldn't say we were at a point. Another important component of this is, and we've made this clear at every meeting where we talked about this, was we wanted to make sure that this was fiscally prudent, but also beneficial to the city, to the residents and to the employees. We don't want to do, we, you know, it's a balancing act and we want to make sure that everyone, if possible, is, is good. And one of the components of that was to actually talk to the PSOs and, and, and hear their thoughts and their concerns, not from a contractual standpoint, but from a practical standpoint. So that when we are investigating these issues, we know what we need to be aware of. Whether it is, you know, um, fear of, of missing out of the police aspect of it or citizen response time or being overnight away from their families, whatever the concerns are. As we, as we've been identified or been notified, I should say, that at this point, the PSOs want to delay that conversation until their wage issue is resolved. And, and that, that makes sense. And so our committee from that aspect to tie up what our employees want is going to be on hold until after the fall or sooner, um, until the wage issue gets resolved. So in the meantime, the committee, the three of us, will continue our attempts to really answer the questions that council had, which is what financially does it look like for the city? If we got the PSOs to contractually agree, because we all know and we all agree that they have to agree to it through the collective bargaining agreement negotiations. But if we were to pursue that course, what would that mean for us financially? So I just wanted to give an update in terms of where we're at so that residents know and employees know and council knows. It's still trudging along. It's hit a couple of roadblocks. And unfortunately, personally, it, it's not within our wheelhouse. This isn't, I'm not a police or fire person. I'm not an administrator. Mayor Carnegie luckily at least has a part of it, but, um, I know that the city needs to find ways to do more with less. And we're not leaving a stone unturned. And based upon the information that we were given, it seemed as though 24s may help us save money. It also, almost more important than saving money, to me, especially because what I'm really trying to do with the City of Fraser is build a base that will ensure that every officer we hired and the two new officers we hire stay for 25 years and become namesakes in our city as the people that were mentioned as potential retirees or the people that have retired. Everyone knows who those officers are because they have been such a valuable part of the community. And, you know, there are struggles that our city has in making that happen, given our financial constraints. So that's really kind of where we're at right now. Um, we'll just do the legwork on our own at this point and, um, or continue to do that, I should say, and, um, you know, see where we go from there.
Thank you. That's a very, very good update and explanation. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Calca.
Thank you. So I was thinking, um, you know, the direction that we want to explore with this. I was thinking now would be a good time to discuss filling the interim director position with a permanent director. The reason for that is, this is not to say anything about our, our interim director Pettis is doing an amazing job. Has nothing to do with him at all. Him and I have sparred back and forth, but you know, I appreciate and I respect him. And I respect you, Officer, Officer Pettis, Director Pettis, um, to the nth degree. But I do think that with this new direction that do, we. But I do think that um, with this new direction that do, we do want to go in and this is a position that we do need to fill. It needs to be an objective position. It needs to be, you know, George was here and George was not, you know, he was, it was an independent position at the time. So um, I think that if we were to put an employment position out for a brand new, or not a brand new, but a director, I would, I would assume that uh, our interim director would help with that transition. I think that that would be amazing. Uh, he's got a lot of, you know, knowledge and insight and and I know that, you know, uh, our interim director would would help in in every, every aspect possible. Um, but if we were to uh, put this out there, then we could put, we could get someone uh, that has experience with either implementing twenty fours, has experience with managing twenty fours. And we can then really get into figuring out if this is economically feasible for us and move us into that next stage or a hybrid. It may not necessarily be that we go full twenty fours, but at least we we have that diverse diversity in terms of being able to figure out whether or not we can even do that. Right now, I feel like we're, we're being asked to be the experts and we're just not. We're we're council people and um, that being said, we we have a need, uh, it needs to be filled and I think, given the circumstances of the direction we'd like to explore, you know, I'd like to get council's feedback on this, obviously. This is just the beginning of that conversation, of course, but um, if it's economically feasible, then we've got somebody that we can bring in that has that experience um, to implement that, or like I said, or hybrid. So with that, you know, I'd like to know what council's thoughts are on that issue.
My my thoughts are, we, we've got a city manager, we've got a finance director, we've got a TPW we're still looking at. It's a lot to chew off at one time, so I'm, you know, it's it's running good. Maybe something, uh, I know costly, it's actually saving us money to operate this way. Um, but we've got a lot to do before I think we cross that bridge. That's just my thought. Councilwoman Shornak.
Um, well, I don't disagree that we need to start looking anyway or start the conversation because I know that interim director Pettis is retiring in the not so far future, I'm sure. And it, you know, to find a qualified candidate for anything, as we've just said, it's going to take four to six months to find a manager. I have to expect that by the time we could even find qualified candidates um, to fill that position, it's gonna take a long time as well. And I would like so, I would like director, interim director Pettis be there to segue the new person in before he retires. I don't want him to retire and then again, I want to be proactive. We have been so reactive in this city for so, so long. I'd rather be uh, proactive and get the conversation started now. Again, knowing that, you know, the top positions are always the hardest positions to find and it's going to take some time, you know? So I I think we at least should start the conversation for sure.
Councilwoman Boransky.
The one issue that um, to me has, it it has always been a struggle when having an interim in any department, especially over a prolonged period, it it isn't a good idea, but particularly here, and this is no disrespect to interim director Pettis, because he does um, have a very strong um, code of ethics. But he's wearing two hats because he's a union member and he's a department head. And that creates challenges and struggles and and it's really hard to navigate that. And all department heads should be filled with permanents, not interims. Um, the city, I think, got into a habit of keeping interims for a long time. I don't know if it was a power play to not get people titles or if it was a financial savings, but I certainly would want to, um, as councilwoman Shornak um, pointed out, do it while he's still here so that um, we have his expertise, um, because we are a tight knit city. Um, but on the split side, it's also good to maybe see a different way to do things. Um, we've already heard today, bringing in outside, you know, different ideas that can be navigated, so. I think that, you know, yep, we got a lot on our plate, but I don't want to be, you know, hearing that he's retired and now we've got to do another interim and and and, you know, and on and on and on. And then the 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 union, two hats to me is 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 where I struggle from just a pure legal perspective is how do you sit on one side of the table when you're negotiating the contracts and then sit on the other side of the table when you're negotiating your own contract? I don't get that conceptually and it's it's not a disrespect to interim director Pettis. I I've said that across the board from the day George, you know, I think he was interim for years. I don't know how you do that. So that's my thoughts.
Hey, can everybody hang on a sec? We have to change the disc.
Can I take a quick break? Five minutes?
Sure. Takes them three minutes to change the disc, so I'll give you five.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, the disc has been changed. We'll call the meeting back to order at at uh, ten oh six PM. Okay, who did we leave off with? It was uh, Amy Boransky had the last word.
No, I was done.
Okay. Anybody else at this time?
I don't think Suzanne's back.
Hi Sue.
I'm here.
Okay.
Never really left.
Is there any other comments you had, Sue?
No, um, I guess I just wanted to make a motion, I guess, to um, it would be an RFP, it would be, we've been doing a lot of RFPs, I mean, it would be like an employment. We're seeking employment, that the City of Fraser is seeking employment for a um, public safety director. We'd like to so my motion would be to direct either Amy Sal or our attorney to put out for an employment position for a full-time public safety director. And I would like part of the job description, um, experience to have uh, either implementation or managing twenty fours. So I guess that would be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Give a second. Kathy Blakey.
Okay, tonight, God.
Yeah.
She's muted though.
Oh, unmute yourself.
It's Patrice's fault. It is. Okay. Mike Pettis. We were chit-chatting. When, when did you plan to retire? Did you hear me?
Um, yeah, I was just getting up. I don't have a real plan. I can leave in one year. Um, I I planned on staying here. I enjoy doing what I'm doing. I feel like I'm doing um, things well. Um, I have no plans on retiring. I certainly, when I do retire, it wouldn't be a um, a one month or even two month. You know, I would give you ample warning uh, when I plan on retiring, but I have no plans on um, retiring when I, at this point, uh, at this point of when my time comes, which is uh, a year from now.
Okay, thank you. I just thought I wanted to hear that from you. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kalka.
Sure, I just want to make clear though, that this has nothing to do with you, director. It has nothing to do with you at all. It has to do with the direction I think we want to move in and if we did hire a full-time PSO director, not an interim, then you would be a lieutenant and you can stay as long as you'd like.
I understand that.
Right. In other words, you would be, you'd still be here. It's not like you're going anywhere. So if you decided you'd work and retire and if you wanted to put in for this, I I would be all for that. That would be great.
Can't put in for it.
What, what was, what was that? Some comments came in.
I did said I I wouldn't be able to put in for it.
Yeah, for a, it's a year or two or whatever.
Yeah, for a year, I wouldn't be able to.
Oh. Whose ever's phone is on, can they turn it off, please? Because the dinging's getting really annoying. So whosever's phone's not on silent. Thank you.
Why, why wouldn't you be able to apply for it? I'm just curious. I, I don't know the 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 whole politics behind it, but whatever.
I don't know that that's appropriate to ask. I I wanna, I just want to be careful. Like, I don't want to put interim director Pettis on a
Yeah, this is a bit early for this conversation.
Yeah, exactly. He's obviously applying if he so chooses or not.
Okay, well, we we do have a motion. That's all we have at this point.
Well, I'll second the motion for right now and then to see what everybody feels. I'm not object to conversation.
I just think we have way too much going on to, for Amy to jump into this one too. It's just, it's not how you run a business. But that's my opinion. Okay, we do have a motion and and we do have support. Any comments and questions on the motion?
I I just have a, I just have a comment. So back when um, Wayne was first hired and, you know, and and then George retired, Wayne kept saying at that time that that he was going to actually post the position. And then he never did and then we made Mike the director, interim director Pettis, we made him the interim director. And so I'm just, you know, I'm kind of torn because again, I'm, I don't like to have people being in this interim position for so long and and not have any solid direction of where we're going. And if if we were to to post that position, I, my feeling is that I I would be, I would welcome director Pettis to apply for it. And and I guess I'm just, I'm 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 torn in that sense of it, so, but I I guess I'd still like to see something, you know? We we really should have posted it back then and we never did.
Well, we didn't for budgetary reasons. We were saving a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year and council decided not to, not to do that, to fill that position and acquire that savings in the department. Because we could operate it without it as an interim. So you're talking about adding another hundred thousand dollar plus to the
It's in the budget already, Mr. Mayor.
I know, but we showed us a savings every year. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments and questions?
Can I, can I, can I respond?
Sure.
Um, okay, as you asked a question, I'm in a union. I'm not eligible to retire for a year at that time. Again, at at that time, my, my, my phone, I think it's connected. I don't know if you can hear those. My phone is connected to my No, he asked a question. I can answer that question. As as being in a union and being, I am not in, uh, directors and at will employee. I mean, he can at the will of the council, he can be, uh, he can lose his job. You lose your job before you're eligible to retire, you can't retire, you can't collect your retirement benefits till you're fifty five. So that's why I wouldn't be eligible to take that position until um, for for twelve months. Do we even apply for that? So that, that's answers the question on that. Again, um, since you guys are taking this to a vote and no warning or no discussion on my end, I I feel kind of necessary to defend my position and defend um, this job and the job that I'm doing. I wasn't prepared for this, to be honest with you. this job and the job that I'm doing. I wasn't prepared for this, to be honest with you. But I took on this job. We had three administrators we went to that I agreed to, saving, you know, $110,000 a year. I don't feel, I feel a sense that this 24-hour shift and because I did a study on it, that I wasn't a fan of it, that that's, we want to bring somebody in that has experience in that. 24-hour shifts. And I said this because I did a study on it, a a unbiased, I believe, study on it, that I felt that it wasn't, wouldn't work well for this department. But I said, employees in the council, that's the direction they want to go, that I would be willing and I would facilitate that and help with that. I'm not going to be a roadblock to that. I would definitely help with that. So I don't know where this is really coming from. You guys are going to vote the way you want, but I feel like I need to defend my position that I think the job that I've done, that I continue to do, is I'm holding up my end of the bargain and I would find it heartening, or a lot of other words, if a director was brought in here at this point. Oh, take that for what it's worth, but I certainly don't support that. Again, if that's the direction you take, I'm a big boy and I'll, I will I'm a professional police officer and I will facilitate the changing of the positions, absolutely, but I think it's unnecessary. I think if we're going to add officers here, it should be road patrol officers, not administration. We've proven that we've done it with two. And to take spend that money on somebody on a somebody that's not on the front lines, that's not out on the street, that's not answering ambulance runs or fire runs or police calls is unnecessary. I think it's, we talk about transparency and saving all the, all the money we can. I find the fact that you want to do this when I'm willing to do it. And I don't know, from my city manager, my staff, to my officers, I think on this side of the wall, people think we're going in the right direction. So where this is coming from and why we want to add another level of administration over here confuses me. I don't agree with it. And so I just want that point to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Estola, could you please do a vote?
Okay, member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blankie? Member Carnegie?
No.
Member Colka?
Yes.
Member Lessidge?
No.
Member Shornak?
No.
Member Wannawiki?
Yes.
Four, three.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Item 10, pending items of unfinished business and reports to administration. Item A postponed item, property maintenance enforcement options, Mr. Do Not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was an update that I prepared. I think it was late June now. I think we postponed it last month to talk a little bit about property maintenance enforcement issues in the city and some of the, I think, difficulties that go with trying to, as a small community with limited resources, bring cities into compliance with property maintenance codes, zoning ordinances, nuisance concerns, things of that nature. And I had circulated a lengthy analysis, an email analysis, explaining all of those different concepts and how they work in practice and in the legal world. The I think the primary impetus for the question had to do with the old Dairy Queen building on Grosseback. And that has been a source of some visual aesthetic concerns, we'll say. It's my understanding that, for the most part, the building department, code enforcement department, believe that it is for the most part, maintained in accordance with the property maintenance code. Doesn't it hasn't become what you would consider to be a danger or an attractive nuisance to others. It's on a parcel of land, as we all know, that is very unique and small and tight. And it doesn't have a lot of conceptual uses. After I put the analysis out and explained that, you know, there's no zoning issue here, there's probably no nuisance issue here, so at most, we might have some property maintenance things we can look at. And those are just little things that, you know, code enforcement can correct either with citations or some sort of court process if that doesn't work. But the bigger picture would be that, in order to actually abate an abandoned use like that, as long as it's being, while it's being maintained, probably the only option for the city would be some sort of condemnation action that would allow the city to actually condemn it for some sort of public purpose, take ownership of it, and then dispense with it as the city sees fit, whether that be in partnership with the neighboring businesses or the county or some other creative approach. Those are some ways to look at this from different angles. And this applies across the board, not just to that particular piece of property, of course. When it comes to getting into more significant litigation, like taking it to a certain court because it's some sort of a nuisance or it needs to be abated for some reason, I've seen that process in action. It's effective, but it's expensive. Because it can be contested, it can be protracted, and it can ultimately be an investment that you'll never recoup and depending on the outcome, may not even be a reward at the end of the tunnel. My understanding, I think after I sent out my legal analysis, I believe Mike Lessich or somebody, I think it was Mike, gave me some more background information or maybe circulated it to everybody about that site. There is some history there that I don't know personally. I tried to look into it online with the planning commission meetings. And it seemed to me that there was going to be there was going to be an agreement of sorts that the new owner was going to do something with that property. I think they were seeking office approval of some kind for that site.
They did get an approval. I was on the board when they did that.
Right, right. So from there, I thought Mike had provided me the history that he knew, indicating that there was supposed to be some sort of reversionary clause or something in it that would have brought back some level of control to the city. And to our knowledge, that didn't happen or doesn't exist. I haven't done a title search to confirm or deny that because that is an expense as well. But that's how it was left as far as that particular piece of property goes. I don't know how much more of a, if you want me to really get into the nitty-gritty of the process and make it into more of a an educational piece on how each little component of enforcement can work. So I'll leave my update at that for right now and certainly answer questions and we can drill down a little more if anybody has any more inquiries into the detail.
Councilwoman Shornak.
So, question with regards to the Dairy Queen. And actually, that property right there on 13 that used to have the Little Caesars.
Little Caesars.
Yeah, that one. Because there's been no progress on that building either. I don't know if it's been held up because of the COVID situation or what, but that's still a train wreck. So from my understanding, if we do go to court and get it cited as blight, then we would be responsible for tearing it down and vacating the property to a vacant lot, correct?
Correct. Usually the approach we take is we get a court order ordering the owner to do it and then self-help for the city. The city can do it if the owner doesn't do it within a specified timeframe. That's usually our approach. And then if the city has to take on that responsibility because the owner refuses or doesn't want to, the city absorbs that cost and then typically gets an order, in the, in the circuit court order would lean that property for recovery property itself. Obviously, when you have a property that may not be saleable or desirable, that lien could sit for a very long time.
Yeah, because I know back when the city purchased it and then sold it to that gentleman, that was supposed to become part of that strip mall or something. I remember, I remember being at that council meeting where he came in and why we ever sold it and didn't demolish it at that point, I don't know. But my concern is like, if we have to pay to tear it down, we will never get that money back. I mean, that's almost a given. I know from what I do for a living, trying to get blood out of a stone is an act of God most days. So I mean, do we, can we obviously, I know we can go to court and mandate him to do it and such, but again, there's nothing really that's going to force his hand because he wouldn't be in contempt, would he, if, if he did not? Okay, so are we able to find him for the way that building looks? I mean, even inside, I have to imagine if any rodents got in through the roof, they're having a field day in there. I mean, equipment's all turned over. I mean, the building is a train wreck. It is a blight. But with that being said, I have had several residents speak to me with regards to their neighbors and their homes are looking quite blighted as well and not because of not being able, I mean, just not doing general upkeep. Would this also, is this just strictly for businesses or is this something that we could also mandate with our citizens? Because I do believe one of the other things is an abandoned house.
Right. These, these processes exist for all properties within the city. The property maintenance code does not discriminate. To your point specifically about defects that would allow rodents or infestation, those are things we could easily work through a ticketing process to bait. The last update I received, which wasn't that long ago, it was after I put out the email, was that this house or this building was pretty much in compliance. The building department, code enforcement, didn't seem to think there was much they could do to do anything with the property. Certainly nothing that would make it look better. We can't mandate color. We can't mandate that it have a certain style. If the paint were dilapidated, maybe we could mandate that they paint it, but they can keep it the same color or make it something completely different. So when it comes to simply safety, nuisance and blight, they're reporting to me that they can't find anything in the property maintenance code that would apply. Interior of buildings is not covered by the property maintenance code. That is an exterior code. When it comes to interiors, that's a whole nother ballgame in terms of, is it an attractive nuisance? Is it not secure? Do we have a criminal element or something in there that we need to get out of there? Cotton residences with the aging population, you see it in a hoarding situation where you have people who are less and less able to take care of themselves. They put themselves in a dangerous position. And in those circumstances, it's not a property maintenance code issue, but it's more of a health, health, safety and welfare issue where we can try to come up with some reasonable means of getting in, whether it's through a guardianship process and probate court or some other means. But when it comes to a business building that's just sitting and it's just a mess inside, but everything's tight, everything's closed, everything's being maintained on the exterior, the grass is being cut, there aren't any major potholes or things that need to be fixed. There's not a whole lot a city can do short of trying to convince either the owner to give it up, trying to convince the owner to work with us to do something about it, or taking the owner to court to either condemn it or abate it in some ways.
Well, with that property, this council was flat-out lied to. They submitted drawings, proposals, council agreed, did not tear it down, sold it to him, and they flat-out lied to city council hoping that that cornered lot would be sold, his entire lot, to all the other buildings and it's going to look like hell. And it's a horrible representation of our city. And I've been talking about it for 10 years and I'm tired of it. So it's, it's just a shame that we can't do something that they flat-out lied to city.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think both properties, where the Little Caesar's Pizza was and the music store, that place being so dilapidated for so long with the whole front taken off, that's the introduction on Grosseback to the city of Frazier. I mean, you cross over that line from Roseville to the city of Frazier and you see that building that's horrible. And then you go one more mile down the road and you get the Dairy Queen that obviously was a Dairy Queen with pieces of the roof missing and, you know, like, like Councilwoman Shornak said, equipment turned over in the windows. It's just there's got to be something in the codes about aesthetics. I mean, it, it, it can't just be about the, the structure. There has to be something about aesthetics that, you know, people are trying to move businesses to Frazier. Right across the street, the guy, the guy that opened the new Coney Island, look at what he did to that building. You know, he changed the whole look of that building and it looks beautiful. And now you see cars in the parking lot, but it sat you know, in a boarded-up situation for so long. And people sitting in that restaurant are looking across the street at that Dairy Queen. And it's just, we've, we've got to do something. They're asked whether we need to enact policy, whether we need to enact, you know, new, new ordinances or whatever we need. We need to move forward, I think.
Ms. Colka.
Thank you. So I agree. I actually called to find out what his asking price for that property is. It's $200,000 for it.
How much?
$200,000.
A Dairy Queen?
Yeah. The Dairy Queen for the building. So I, I thought maybe we could see done about a cost-benefit analysis of how much it would cost to institute litigation. Over all the allegations we potentially might have, what that cost might be, let's see if we can't buy it from him and demolish it, turn it into a parking lot. And maybe we can get the guy next door or maybe even the surrounding businesses to help us contribute.
Well, then we should be able to buy it for 19 grand because that's how much you bought it from the city for.
Well, the point is that if we can get, you know, maybe, I think that party store right there, I didn't even know there was a party store there because it's blocking the view. But you might be able to get the guy at the party store to contribute some money and maybe some of the iPod drop and maybe even Azteca to contribute some money or, you know, to the fund to help buy the property and demolish it and turn it into a parking lot. I don't know. These are just, I'm just trying to think outside the box here of things we can do so that we don't, we don't continue down the same road because obviously what we've been doing isn't working. And if we aren't proactive about it in some fashion, it's going to be sitting there in 10 years and he's going to want $250 for it.
It's been there for 10 years.
Yes, it has.
I, I brought it up my first year on council. That's 12 years ago.
I mean, I would pay five grand for it. I'd pay five grand and I'd even, you know, I'd, I'd buy the property so we could demolish it. I just do because it's, it's so bad. It really is. And I know offense to the owner, but come on, do something with it. It can't be, it's you know. So maybe do some brainstorming on what, what, what our options are. Maybe looking at the, at the ordinances a little bit more fine with a fine tooth comb for the violations.
Well, I was gonna say, we can't beat a dead horse, but we've done this horse 10 times already. So we'll move on. Any other questions for Don? I see his message. Okay. Okay, at this time, reporter, mayor and city council. And I will start off with, thank you for joining us, Patrice Shornak.
Really, you gotta be me first. Okay. Yeah, that's gonna get to the institute attorney to sit in my house. Okay, so the only thing actually that I wanted to mention was with regards to John Sackfahr. He and I were not friends, but he did serve this city on council. I believe he was a police officer, too, wasn't he?
Not for Frazier.
Okay. I couldn't remember. Anyway, but he did pass away. And anybody who has the courage and wherewithal to run for a public office in a small community deserves our thanks and recognition for time served. Even if we didn't agree on things all the time, that person should still get that recognition for stepping forward and putting forth an effort to make their community better. So to his family and friends, I'm sure he will be very missed. And I wanted to offer my condolences. Other than that, I think that is it for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Proton Winawicki.
So we have dumped a lot onto Amy Sell and I want to recognize her because I have the most confidence in her and utmost confidence in that she's going to be able to not only exceed our, not only meet our expectations, but exceed our expectations on everything we dumped on her tonight. So I appreciate you being a trooper and staying throughout this, this meeting. And Mr. Thompson, I also appreciate you are ready because A, you wore a jacket and a tie. You joined the meeting, you got your technology fixed, and I hope that we can come to, you know, a great resolution here and welcome you as an interim city manager. So with that, I know that we've discussed a lot of very, very difficult topics here tonight. And I just hope that no one is taking anything personal because it's not personal. It's all about, you know, this council is trying to move things forward. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Amy Baransky.
Well, first I want to congratulate the mayor on becoming a grandpa. And I'll let him share the details, but, oh, there she is. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. So excited for you. Obviously, I also want to give my condolences to the Sexhour family. He did serve our city. And I just want to thank council and everyone, the department heads, the employees and the residents. We actually got through this meeting a lot faster than I thought we would, even with some prolonged conversations. And there's a lot of work to do, but the census is coming and it's real and $2.5 million is real. And remember, although he doesn't work for us anymore, you know, our finance director, I think he said we had to do 13 or 15 mil a year for 13 years to get out of it. Now, I don't want to do that to the residents. The council doesn't want to do that, but we have to be mindful of that financial hurdle. And that's what this council is trying to do is make sure that we have a base and we have a foundation so that everyone's home values can stay high and we can stay safe and happy and our employees can stay because it's lucrative to work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Colka.
Thank you, mayor. I just have a couple of things. I just want to make sure, we're going to have a Parks and Rec and senior center update in September. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, right on. And then the other thing, I was hoping, if it was the will of council in November, Nick, I was hoping that maybe you and John could meet over the next few months and do that deep dive into the motor pool. I'm going to try to give you enough time that you can really kind of sit down with him and whoever else you need, you know, to kind of go through all that and really kind of get us some concrete information or at least a better idea of what's going on with the motor pool. And if you need a little extra time, I get that, but I'm just going to set like November as the time period that'll give you at least a month from the time that the, it appears that the parks will be completed. So you can sit down and obviously just to give us an update of where you're at. But I really want that to be ready to go for the next budget cycle. So that's why I want to have it by, you know, I'm thinking November would be a good, a good time.
You know, if it's not done, we at least can update where we're at with it.
Right on. Thank you very much. That's, that would be what I would, I would recommend. And that's pretty much it, other than just keep, you know, keep going down the road you're going. It's really been, it's very refreshing to see. And also too, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Sell, who's been, obviously, been thrown on, a lot on your lap and I can appreciate, you know, that. And we are very sensitive to that fact. So if you run into hurdles or problems or issues, please do not hesitate to reach out. Send us an email or whatever if you run into any issues. We're here. We're here to help. We're here to, you know, we're here to be, to communicate with you. And then Mr. Thompson, again, thank you very much for, you know, being here, taking this on. I know this is, I'm very impressed that you're still here. So thank you as well. And with that, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Sue. Councilman Lessig.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the election workers, Kelly, Chelsea, the precinct workers and the absentee ballot counters, whatever they're called. We had a historically high primary voter turnout of, I think, over 40%, which is pretty much unheard of. And they executed that and it looks, and they all looked tired the next day, but they appeared to have been pretty proud of the work they did. And I am too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My wife worked the polls too, and so did my daughter. So it worked out pretty well. Anyway, I did take Nick up on his invitation to tour the DPW. I did that, I think, a week and a half ago or so. Met with Jason and Nick, talked for a while about his operations, what's going on there. We talked about the water main projects and what's going. And I learned that there was an extra water main under 14 mile that the city, that weren't, didn't appear on any current drawings of the city over there by Forcia. So those are one of the things you, when you start digging things up, that's when you find the problems that somebody tried to fix before. But the project seems to be moving well, moving along well. I know there's a lot of orange barrels, but overall, the disruption seems to be as minimal as possible. So thank you for that. I did drive down Fruha. Thank goodness I had a Jeep. It's like driving in an off-road vehicle sometimes down there, but it's going to be great when it's done. Last but not least, I did get something in the mail today. I want to show everyone. The Michigan Municipal League, oh, can't see it. It's a plaque from the Elected Officials Academy. It's a program where if you work with the MML or other organizations, you can earn basically continuing education credits and involvement credits. And so I am a level one elected official, according to the MML. And I got a neat plaque I can put on my wall. But I enjoy the work. And today we had a macro meeting and many communities are, everybody seems to be working similar to us. People are back to work, PPEs in place. Everyone's trying to find ways to access the CARES money, CARES Act money from the county. And I think it's $2.5 million has been allocated so far or tentatively approved out of 10 million. So we have 200 and some thousand or 189,000 available. I would like to see us, if we can, come up with some good ways to spend that that would improve our remote operations, improve our access to the, for our residents and taxpayers and vendors, people building in our city. So let's keep working on that. And last but not least, and Mike, you were probably going to talk about it, but I'm curious how the ambulance is coming. So that's all I have. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Councilman Blenke.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank.
She's muted.
I know. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Patrice for making me mute that. Secondly, I'd like to thank Nancy Ruby and Alyssa Hanky, who worked the farmer's market last Saturday. They did a terrific job. Third of all, I'd just like to say that tonight was one of the hardest meetings I've had in a long time. And I've had a lot of hard days in this city as an employee, as a council person. I'm going into a 10th year. We'll discuss, that's a discussion for another time. The same thing we were asking Director Pettismore, the same thing we talked about with, to Nick, we talk about information. In order to move this city forward, we have to have a blueprint. We have to have a future. If someone said to me, what's important to you five years, five years from now, dear God, when I was 40 or 50 or 60, that was a whole different conversation. A lot of these decisions I'm making up here, and you saw the same empathy and emotion with Mr. Winawicki, Mrs. Baransky, they're hard to make because it's easier to keep in your comfort zone. I went to Mike's wedding. I've known Michelle forever. These are people that have impacted my life. And yet I feel that as hard as these decisions I were making, they will long-range impact the city so that people can say they had the 20 and 30 great experience as so many as I've had. I am just saying that in my heart, I think a lot of the decisions made will be fruitful. Everything is going to be okay. It's just right now, we have to get used to the new different. You heard conversations, who communicated, who didn't communicate, the roadblocks, and people were being civilized. People make mistakes in life. We all do. None of us are perfect, but we're really trying, as uncomfortable as that is, to make a difference. Thank you for listening. And in December, you will see a difference in your tax bill because as we're doing all this, this council did reduce, we went from nine mils to 4.5 mils. And you'll see that difference in December. So thank you for your patience and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, do you have anything to say?
Nothing, grandpa. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Denal.
Just a short apology. I, Ms. Colka was talking. We were on the Dairy Queen nuisance abatement issue and my battery on my iPad just died. It's plugged in and it still couldn't keep up with the power drain. So I switched over here to my laptop now, but I missed a bit. So if there's anything I need to catch up on, please let me know, but I have nothing else to report.
It was Donald Trump. I said, you're fired.
Actually, Don, we didn't notice, so that's okay.
See, I noticed. I noticed. I noticed.
I know, we noticed.
Oh, wow.
We still, we, no, it's fine. No problem.
Just trying to get a smile out of everybody. Ms. Amy Sell, do you have anything?
My head's just spinning and I'm looking forward to trying to help. And I'll see some people at City Hall tomorrow.
As they said, just reach out. I'm a half a mile from here and you can stop in any time. So, Mr. Topten, thank you for joining us tonight. We look forward to working with you. And a couple of things I have, I've got some calls lately regarding rats in our city. And Mr. Wright has been looking into some of it. One resident, he should have had baby rats finding in the yards and stuff. So we really don't have a rat policy. There's really not much we can do. So I asked Mr. Wright to put some information together on equipment, capital, or anything he needs for Frazier to have actually a rat plan and how to deal with these things. Normally, he just tells them, put out some traps. It's all we can do. So we're going to try to address that to help the residents out in the next couple of meetings coming up and start the conversation. COVID has kicked up in Combs County. Everyone, please wear their masks out in public. It is, the numbers are gaining a lot of ground in Combs County. It was reported today. So please be careful out there. Continue to wear your masks. Our new ambulance, Part 1, is completely finished, done. It's just going to be, wait for an inspection. I think go into service real soon. Get a chance to stop by and look at it. And it will be a nice piece of equipment to our residents for event life support for them. And also, as Ms. Baransky said, I became a grandfather this, this week for the first time. A beautiful little girl, Lillian Christine. So welcome her to our family. And it's, they said it's different. It is different. So thank you. Thank you all for your.
So much better. Welcome to the Grandparent Club.
Thank you. It's hard to even explain it. Let's see. At this time, I'll go on. So is there any citizen participation? Anybody out there in viral land that would like to comment?
Mr. McCoy has his, Mr. McCoy has his hand raised on the Zoom.
I see him here.
Okay.
Hello. How are you guys tonight?
Good, Tom. How are you?
All right.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a question of all the council. You guys want to change the city dynamics with the department heads? What is your vision for the city going forward? Because certain department heads do their jobs to the best of their ability. They run their departments 1,000% great, the way I see it on the streets. And I'm on these streets every single day, going from south end to north end, west to east in the city. And I see officers left to right. I see DPW left to right. Everybody is working their butts off out there. They are doing their best they possibly can. What is your vision going forward by going up the bid instead of offering the department heads the job that they've already done for two plus years and taking over the job when they were asked to? Instead of offering them the job first, why would you go up the bid and basically just say, well, thanks for your help. We'll see you later?
Thanks for your question, Tom. I would just say there's seven different opinions. So at this time, your best bet would be to contact each of one of us and give us a shout. And I'm sure everyone can give you their explanation. And some of these things are just being looked at. It's not saying that they're going to happen. I believe council's just looking at all different options at this time.
Okay. I mean, I mean, you know, from a citizen's standpoint, from watching the meeting, paying really close attention to what's going on, you know, during meetings, behind the scenes, knowing what's being talked out before and after meetings, it's very disheartening to see the city going in the direction it's going and basically changing the, you know, the dynamics and, you know, seeing the city change in a way that it's not going to ever be the same. You guys have a good night.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Anybody else at this time? I see Don and Michelle. Do you see anybody? Nope. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I.
I raise your hand.
Second. Who was second?
I was.
Thank you, sir.
Good night, everybody. You safe?